Called meeting order at seven thirty, six thirty gone. So this is the committee of the whole administration and finance committee meeting of Monday, February the twelfth. Like twelve from everyone here, let's see we have a few people in attendance tonight, probably because of the delegations and presentations, of which there are two. So, second item on the agenda, the chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented, councillor Barrett, seconded by councillor Smale. Those who favor please signify. It's carried. And the third item on the agenda is disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here, CEO? Councillor Morrell.
Yes, I would like to, it's not a disclosure of pecuniary interest, but it is of an interest I have taken part in in the South Granville Bluegrass Festival for the last, like, four years, and it's going to be year five coming up, and I've volunteered my services as a, as the MC for that event, so I don't have any pecuniary interest, but I do have an interest in the, in the volunteering part.
And doing a great job as MC.
It's so good, Jerry. Imagine, it's all been talking.
I have to fill this in. Yes, yes, yes.
So, the, under the changes in this block, his interests have to be reduced to writing. So councillor Morrell will do that, and the minutes will, will soon know his declaration. And so now I'm on to item number four on the agenda, and item number four on the agenda is any business arising from the previous meeting, which was held on January the ninth. I'm waiting to see if anybody has any business arising from those minutes. Hearing none, I'm about to move on. We'll move on then with item number five on the agenda. Item number five on the agenda is the delegations and presentations, and the first presentation this evening, tonight, will be from the public library, and Alexine.
So that's it, Mr. Mayor?
Your presentation, so welcome, Alexine, and look forward to your presentation. Now, we have the, the presentation in front of us in heart, I'm assuming you're going to use somewhat the same slides?
Yep, precisely, so everybody can follow along with the sense of their, good evening everyone. So I am the new CEO with the Edwardsburg Cardinal Public Library, and this evening I will be presenting to you our statistics from our previous years, so from the year 2017, just a bit of an overview from last year. We got a new CEO, Emily Farrell is no longer with us, she's at the Brockville Public Library, and we implemented our strategic plan in the year of 2017. By doing so, we actually completed some of the things on our strategic plan, the first thing being we've improved our technology in our branches, so we bought two new computers for our staff computers, we upgraded our internet to provide faster and better internet for the public, as well as for the staff, and we also installed a program called Smart Shield, which protects our patrons' privacies, as well as our computers, so that they can continue to work in top shape for everyone. Another thing that we have done is we've expanded our online presence through marketing on Facebook, our website, et cetera, we have more likes and followers now, which is great because it's improving our program attendance, and we also had twenty-three hundred people attend the one hundred and forty programs that we held in 2017. Going forward, we're looking to create a procedure to notify our patrons of overdue notices via email and phone call, we're also reviewing our current program offerings, which is part of our strategic plan, we hope to continue to create connections with service groups, organizations, educational institutes, and our local government, and we're also looking at pursuing alternative library lending programs, such as a recreational lending program, where we could have basketballs and soccer balls, and things like that. So let's look at some of our stats. Our cardholders increased a little bit for 2017, you'll notice that for 2017 we have a slight drop in a lot of things, this has to do to quite a bit, the first thing being changeover in staff, as well as the loss of our school attendance, so because Benson closed, and Centennial decided not to partake in library visits, and we were unable to reach out to SEAFED, we had less circulation due to two hundred students not visiting the library and not taking out books. So our circulation went down by a tad, but we're also noting that circulation is down across the province, especially in the region, Beetle Lakes has noted this, North Granville, Brockville Public Library as well have noted that their circulation has gone down, but our in-branch visits are still up there with about ten thousand visits a year. So here's a breakdown of our circulation by month, you'll see that orange is this year, so it drops for December, this has to do, as I mentioned, with our school visits, so the school visits, because the schools closed, and because we had no visits, like kids actually coming to the library to partake in a school visit, our circulation was affected, so that was about a hundred and twenty students a month not taking out books from the library for the year, but what we do notice in this graph, and in the following graph, which is the number of people entering the library, if you follow the yellow line, which is 2016, and follow it into the orange line, so follow it from about July, August, when we had our renovations in Cardinal, we've had tremendous numbers in people coming in since the reno. So since we've refreshedened the library and our collection, people are enjoying it, they are using the library more, and they're coming in more because of that. So this is the difference between our Spencerville and Cardinal branch, blue is Cardinal, so people are using the library, they're coming in, December was a yucky month for, for weather-wise, so it's not unusual for us to see December drop, that is the trend across libraries, November, December tends to be our slower months, July and August were fabulous, we love our summers, we love to reach out to everybody in the community for our summer programs, so this is the numbers there. Cardholders has gone up again, so which is great to see, more people are getting cards as they find out about us, through our Facebook marketing, et cetera. And then the big one, programs, so this is what we're all about, we offer a lot of programs in the public library, so our outreach, which is school visits, whether they come to the library, or we go to the schools, like with SEAFED, the Spencerville Fair is included in there, when we do the day camps, it's included in there, the day camps in Johnstown, so we've reached fourteen hundred people through our outreach programs, and then through other traditional, classic library programs, where, like Baby Time and Book Club, Storytime, we're seeing good attendance numbers, so for 2017, we held a hundred and forty programs total, and reached twenty-three hundred people, you'll note the breakdown in numbers per program, as well as the percentage that that encompasses. Our focus for 2018 is going to be digital literacy, and so libraries are all about literacy, we're all about numeracy, we're all about all of those things, but this year my focus is really going to be that digital literacy, and so any special programs will encompass our robots dash and dot, as well as our makey makey, so these are fun things that get the kids involved in learning in a fun, dynamic environment, where they don't necessarily realize that they're learning, and it brings them into the library, and it fosters that creativity and that numeracy and that digital learning that is so important in libraries today. So you'll see some of our programs with our pictures down there, so we're still doing the traditional things, like the crafts with our storytime, we have our babies coming in every Thursday, I had twins last Thursday, it was fantastic, they were adorable, you'll see the kids playing Tetris with the makey makey there, so they get to, to figure out why and how it's working through connectivity and Play-Doh and a computer, and then we have another traditional storytime with puppets. So we're really doing our traditional literacy and bringing in the tech as well. Now the thing that you guys all want to see is the numbers, so our 2017 municipal grant was ninety-five thousand five hundred, which was an increase of three thousand dollars from 2016, so that per capita number that we're very interested in is thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents, that's what it was last year, and per household that amounted to thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. So for 2018, with the municipal grant of a hundred and five thousand five hundred, which is an increase of ten percent, we're looking at a per capita rate of fourteen eighty-seven and a household rate of thirty-three ninety-two. So I know when we sat down last month, it was a sixteen percent increase, so it's now just a ten percent increase, and when you look at our comparing libraries, our neighboring libraries, we're on the lower spectrum of numbers, Prescott gets a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for their population, which is lower than Edwardsburg Cardinal, Augusta Township gets, for 2016, sorry, they got ninety-nine thousand dollars for a very comparable township in terms of population number, and their total operating budget was also more. So in 2016, our operating budget was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, theirs was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, so we're looking at our 2017, or, sorry, our 2018 budget to be a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, which is in a huge increase from 2016, when we look at the numbers. You'll also note that in terms of number of programs that we're holding in our library, we're doing phenomenally well, so we offered ninety-seven programs in 2016, in 2017 we offered a hundred and forty programs, our neighboring libraries that are comparable, like Prescott, Augusta, and Westport, are under, are around fifty programs a year, so we're really out there in the community, we're really pushing to, to be there for our community and offer those free library programs that anybody can partake in, and that's what the money is going to. So that is our, that is the library. So thank you kindly on behalf of myself and our library board, and I hope that you take that into consideration when looking at the budget later.
So, very good, very, very interesting presentation, and, and very crisp, thank you very much, and some good information, so I'll just open it up, if there are any folks at the table that have questions. Somebody? Yes, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your presentation, do you know what the, or do you have on hand, rather, the increase in costs as a result of the minimum wage change from 2017 to 2018, what that projected impact's going to be on your budget?
So it doesn't, the impact for 2018 was the CPI, so the cost of living increase, but you'll see our budget later with Mel, Mel will present that in the 2018 budget for the township.
Okay, so just, so the, there's, you're saying that there was no, none of your employees made under fourteen dollars an hour in 2017?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all over in 2017.
Okay, so the only, and so the only difference is the, that CPI percentage is what you're looking for?
Yeah, it'll increase in 2019.
Okay.
Yeah, will be the big impact.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a clarification on your presentation, you said a hundred and forty programs were held, is that one hundred and forty different programs, or one hundred and forty events?
Sessions, so it could have been twenty storytimes throughout the year, for instance, fit into that a hundred and forty programs, and that's a hundred and forty opportunities that the community had to either come to the library, or that we were out in the community doing a program of some kind.
Okay, so it's not a hundred and forty programs, it's a hundred and forty sessions?
Yeah.
Ed?
I have no questions, just a few comments, I just noticed that your, your overall outlook, especially the youth in the community, is, is changing, and they're, they're excited to go, they're excited for the programs, your social media pitches have been bang on, and I think well received, so I just wanted to congratulate all of your guys' work, and keep up the, keep it up for the kids, and I think you're a great person.
Just a quick question from me, I can understand the effective closure of Benson School that, because I think they used to visit more than once a year.
We would go to Benson.
You would go to Benson, so that was the outreach?
Yeah.
But then you indicated that the Spencerville School doesn't come to the library.
Yes, so this year, unfortunately for the school year of 2017, 2018, the principal decided to no longer come to the library for library visits, they have a library within their school as well, and so because the numeracy numbers have been so down in the education field, their focus is numeracy, and she made an executive decision to pull the kids, to no longer do that outreach and keep the kids in school, so they can try to work on those numeracy numbers, and work with their in-library, their in-house library aisle seat.
But do you outreach into the school?
I will be going, they have their welcome to kindergarten at the end of the year, so I will be going there, so I can talk to parents and talk to them about the programs that we do offer, and I hope to go in June to market our summer programs, so I invite the kids to come into the library over the summer, and the important reason being is that a lot of the high-risk kids find a safe place in the library in the summertime, air conditioning, water, and we, we're a fun space, so the kids that aren't necessarily in extracurriculars over the summertime tend to come to the library, and this is why the school visits were so great and important, because they knew it was a place that they could come to, and they knew where we were because of it.
They're familiar with it.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that my outreach visits will fill that gap, but next year there's supposed to be a new principal, so we're, we're going to reevaluate going back.
Okay, but that, here we're in February, so as of this point during the year, from September until now, you haven't actually been invited into the schools, or, or into that school?
Not into Centennial, I'll only be doing the welcome to kindergarten and the June programs.
And how about SEAFED?
SEAFED, we're going out to them for the winter semester, so from now until the end of the year, we're visiting them every five months for 2018, every five weeks, sorry.
Every five weeks?
Yeah, for 2018.
Different grade each week, or how's it work?
Kathy, so our library assistant to Cardinal, does a storytime with each classroom, and she talks about what's at the library, and what the kids can come and do with the library in the coming weeks, so she advocates for us then.
Appreciate you painting that picture, thanks very much, who else, who have any other questions?
Could I, could I just make a, a comment, thank you, Alexine, for a very positive and uplifting presentation. I just wanted to make everyone here on council and community aware, that there was one night when the things were kind of, there were a lot of negative things happening in the council chambers, and there was a lady at the back that said, I'd like to commend councillor Morrell for his excellent choice and, and selection of the new C, CEO of the library, and I said, oh, well, thanks, it's nice of you to say that, but I really didn't have anything to do with it, and you made a comment, Mr. Mayor, at the time, you said, you know, you're getting positive comments, take it when you can get it, you know, type of thing. So I'd just like to point out that here tonight is the chairperson, Ruth, Ruth over there is our chairperson, that was on that hiring committee, and Mr. Robertson was on that hiring committee, and so was a lady from Seoul, like, just, her name escapes me at the moment.
Peggy Malcolm.
Peggy Malcolm, and so those, they are the ones that were responsible, they were the hiring committee, and they did the job, and that's why I held my hand up, said I really didn't have anything to do with it, and even though it would have been nice that night to accept some warm, warm fuzzies, but anyway, I'm just making you all aware tonight that Alexine was chosen by the flying committee, and she made an excellent presentation, and I wanted to acknowledge Ruth and Dave's, Dave's job at that.
Okay, and maybe Ruth and Dave, Dave can extend our, our thanks to Peggy as well, so, but we'll say that councillor Morrell provides moral support to the library board. Okay, well, again, I'll just echo the thanks to, from the committee for the presentation, as I said, very crisp, very well presented, and thank you for the presentation. I, I know, I understand that the, the library ask has been adjusted, and so we, I think you see the new number here tonight in the fact that we've got in front. Okay, so no further comments about that, and I'm moving on to five B on the agenda, and five B on the agenda is a presentation from the Bluegrass Festival, and we have Kim Wallace here with us, who's the sort of chair of that, I don't know whether you call yourself chair Kim, and also we have Dave Porter with us, so, which is making the presentation.
I'm gonna, Dave's gonna get up and say a few words, and then I'll follow too.
Okay, so Dave?
Hi, Dave Porter, as Mr. Seau said, I, I'm originally from this area, grew up in the Prescott, Johnstown, Donville area, and went to South Granville from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty-three, have lived in Ottawa though for the past fifty years, and we're, we're here to, my purpose is to explain two things about our, our festival. What is, one of the questions I noticed in our application was our, about our nonprofit status, so our festival committee is actually a subcommittee of the Board of Directors of the Ottawa Valley Bluegrass Music Association. The Ottawa Valley Bluegrass Association operates a number of activities, one, the largest of which actually is the festival, and so our committee reports to that board, and that organization is a federally incorporated not-for-profit corporation, so that's, we do have not-for-profit status, and corporate status. The second thing I wanted to mention was that Ken and I were the, two of the three people who started this festival almost five years ago now, and we're the two remaining of that three, and we decided right off the bat that we would try to do things as professionally as we could, and I have a large role in that, I'm the treasurer of the organization, so I'm a CPA/CA, so I wanted to tell you that, so that you hopefully have a little more assurance that whatever finances we get from the township are well managed, and we, we do everything very, very professionally. So with that, I'll leave it to Ken to talk about the festival itself, and thank you for allowing us to make the presentation.
So, Dave, if you don't mind, just a couple of questions for clarification before we say.
Okay.
Number one, so a donation to the Spencerville Bluegrass Festival, does that generate a tax, a charitable tax receipt from the Ottawa corporate body?
No, we're not, we're not a, we're not a charity, we're just a not-for-profit corporation.
Okay, but does it generate a not-for-profit charitable, okay, you're not, okay, I understand, you're not a charitable organization, you don't issue receipts?
Right.
You're a non, not-for-profit corporation?
Under the Canada not-for-profit corporation.
Okay, and so they operate, or the Bluegrass Festival operates as a separate division?
As a sub, a subcommittee of the board, and actually there are six board members from the parent organization on the committee, so it's, it's a pretty close connection.
Okay, are the, are the finances kept separate?
Finances are kept completely separate, festival has its own bank account, and last year the check was written to the, to the Ottawa, sorry, to the Spencerville Bluegrass Festival, and it, you know, went into that account and stays there. We have a, we have a, when, when this organization was set up, as a subcommittee of the Ottawa Valley Bluegrass Association, for the first year it existed independently, and then it requested to be adopted by the, by the association, and so there was a document passed by the original committee and by the board of the association, which specified that the finances of the festival would remain separate from the, from the larger body.
Okay, I just need to see the structure and understand the structure.
Yeah.
Appreciate the structure, so, go ahead, Kim.
Okay, I was here last year, of course, I'm just gonna recap a little bit last year on, on the structure of the festival from year one, which was 2014. As Dave mentioned, it was, the first year was, was, I guess I'm gonna say, I owned the festival, so to speak, took a chance on it, worked with all our local regional bands for the first year, and I believe we had twelve, I've been working with a lot of those regional bands ever since. In year fourteen, or year, year one, 2014, we worked on it in a, in a rush, simply because there was a festival in Moose Creek that had folded, simply because they had to change their venue and move to a different location, it cost them much more money, and they were going downhill rather than uphill. So, I think we took about six months to basically, from the beginning until the actual date, and we ended up with sixty-five RVs that came in the first year on such short notice. I don't have the exact number on, on just daily walk-in people, however, moving forward to year two, we had about an eighty percent increase in, in mainly RVs, walk-ins were up a little bit. Year 2016, we could see that it was, things were working, and it was working in our favor simply because we had got a lot more advertising out, and myself personally, and Dave as well, we're both in a band, and we do travel quite a bit, I guess I've been from down east Nova Scotia to festivals as far up as Hamilton, and as far south as Governor, at different Bluegrass festivals. So, in traveling those, those areas, we're able to do a lot of advertising, as most people in the bluegrass genre of music, they travel from festival to festival all summer. So, we're seeing a lot of the same people, on the other hand, we're seeing quite a few new people. So that's, that's our biggest way of advertising, you know, and getting the word out. 2016, year three, we brought in one American band, and moving on to 2014, we brought in two American bands, both those years, we had increased approximately twenty percent on both years, like twenty percent each year growth. Last year we brought in, we're, we're trying to focus a lot of the festival on youth, we're trying to get youth involved in this bluegrass music, and we brought in a young fellow, twelve years old, I guess he was thirteen last year, by the name of Carson Peters from Tennessee, and first time I seen him live, first time anybody, I think, that was at our festival actually seen him live, and I'm sure Jerry can, can agree with me, his last performance, he got two full standing.
Two on course.
Two on course, and it just like, people just didn't want to leave this young, young fellow alone. He travels with his dad, they also have two other younger kids, I think eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, and the one young, young fellow's father also travels with them. So after seeing the, the response from the crowd, we polled his dad, and his mom was actually there as well, and said, would you come back next year? And their eyeballs lit right up like this, and they said we would love to come back next year. So basically, I did that for two reasons, first of all, the crowd loving this young kid, and the band, as well as the marketing, because now that word's gonna get out to different people that this was a phenomenal show, and hopefully we're gonna get, you know, more people over this. We've been posting on Facebook, I have this band on my Facebook page, I've been watching some of the, the comments going back and forth, and from what I can see transpiring, we're gonna get lots of people from the upper New York State that's gonna come this way, rather than going all the way to Tennessee. So I do have, I've got them coming, I've got second U.S. band that's coming from Georgia, gonna be performing on the Thursday, Friday night, I have another band coming on from Ohio, gonna be performing through it the whole weekend. I've done a survey on, on the whole region after last year's festival, I contacted all the motels from Doors Inn, right straight down to Johnstown, and each one of those motels had somebody in it that came to our festival.
Quite a few, actually.
Quite a few, yeah, I was, I was actually surprised. I've got these, I'm advertising these motels this year right in our flyer, that is being put out there to the public, every place that we travel, they go, so people can already see that there's contact information on there for our local motels.
Gonna have to get you to the ask, you, you, I know you're gonna, you're making, you're coming because of the grant program.
That's correct, that's correct, so basically, we, we're spending a fair amount of dollars in advertising to get this out more to our local facility, because we've got, you know, we've got beyond that covered, so it's more. So, it's more so in our own community that we, we've still gotta get the word out. We have, you know, a fair amount of costs in this. Yeah, we got a fair amount of costs in this. Um, the, the, um, Fair Board charges us five thousand for the, for the use of the property. And we also use the kitchen as well there, which is another five hundred dollars on top of that, plus HST. What I do with this is I try to keep everything in the community. We last year used the Presbyterian Church here in Spencerville, looked after all our breakfasts. They used the kitchen. They provided breakfast to, you know, all of our campers. Uh, the Optimus Club, they serve dinner through the kitchen at the, uh, at the, uh, fair, fairgrounds. Saturday, we actually used Wooden's BBQ Chicken. So, we're trying to keep everything in the community. And, um, again, doing the survey, I visited, um, the Village Pantry. I visited, um, Drummond's as well, and their business was over and done. So, another geographical survey we did this year, every camper that came in, we took all their information as to mainly their postal code, if they wished to add more to it. Lo and behold, we had people there last year from Florida and as far away as Bermuda. So, we're bringing people into the community that didn't even know Spencerville existed on the map. Basically, what it boils down to. The most important thing that we have been, been doing right from year one is, um, is comment cards. We ask people to fill out comment cards. If they've got anything that they wanna tell us, negative, positive, whatever. Since we started, we've had zero negative comments. It's all been positive, and... And the reason we do that is to, to help the people and try and find out what they want. That's what it boils down to. So, every year, we make it better for what the people are asking for.
But we get a lot of positive comments. There's no question about that.
It's all positive. It's all positive. Um, I don't think...
What was our level of support last year, Kim?
I think you, yeah, it was twenty-five hundred dollars plus, um, in kind, which was, um, looking after the garbage and opening up the community center for showers. And that one alone was a big bonus to, uh, to all of the people over here.
I think you, you generally bring your application form with you, do you not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you'd be looking for roughly the same amount this year?
We actually requested five thousand, but we, we were thinking about the site cost as, uh, as the main target for that funding.
Right.
Cause a lot of, a lot of not-for-profit festivals get their site for free, so we're kinda disadvantaged that way.
It's a, but, but the point is, it's great location and it's great facilities. And, uh, uh, you know, one of the questions that I kinda wanted to ask is, uh, what is your gross, like, what, what is your level of magnitude that you're working on here? Just gross numbers?
Uh, the gross revenue is about fifty thousand.
Okay, so you're about a fifty thousand dollar a year operation, yeah. And we know that the spin-offs in the community, I mean, I've had various people talk to me about that. Uh, I get, every time I walk down the main street here, and I get it from the people in Johnstown as well. So, um, but just so you know, the, um, we put X numbers of dollars in the line item on our budget that goes to all of the various requests that we get. Uh, I think the deadline is...
March twenty-third.
March the twenty-third, and then sometime after March the twenty-third. We take all of the various asks, and we try to allocate them as best we can amongst the various groups. So, uh, we, we appreciate what you're doing, uh, with the, with the festival. We appreciate the fact that you make so much of a, such a great effort to make sure that the, the benefits spread throughout the community. Uh, and, uh, I'm sure when we get to that part on our, uh, budget allocation process that your presentation here this evening will be taken into account by the, by the committee. Needless to say, we'd love to have enough money to be able to, uh, to support everybody. Uh, but I'll just let you know that when we have about fifteen thousand dollars on that line item in the budget, the requests are totaling up around forty. So, there has to be some sort of, of cut. Now, does anybody have any questions for either Kim or Dave, Councilor?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks very much for your presentation. To the, uh, to the mayor's question, it was fifty thousand in revenue, twenty seventeen?
Twenty, twenty seventeen, right.
And, and what were your, uh, or what are your expenses?
Uh, expenses were, um, twenty seventeen, forty-three thousand.
Okay, and how many people, like, how many unique, uh, visits did you have? I don't know how you, uh, you festival guys would know how to describe it better than I, I would. So, not the same person coming each day of the festival, but, uh, how many people came through the gate?
That's, that's something we're still wrestling with a way to figure out ourselves, because, you know, the same person can... Sometimes people pay for the entire festival.
Right.
Some, sometimes they come for one evening and then decide to come back the next day and buy a separate ticket, and then it just gets very difficult to, to know if you're getting a new person or the, or, you know, same person returning.
I, I know an accountant who never tell me, would tell me to never bet, but if you, if you were to ballpark a number, but it, like, what do you, what do you generally bet?
I would, I would guess, uh, seven or eight hundred.
Okay. And, and my final question, if I can, Mr. Mayor, uh, are there any that you know of competing, um, major events, uh, on your, on your, that weekend with you this year? I feel like, I feel like Kempville Live was a, was a conflict. Was that last year?
It was July.
Yeah, that was earlier. That was earlier than ours, which kinda gave us a little bit more leverage on advertising.
Okay.
In there.
So, this year, this year looks like a clean calendar for you?
We do. I think they did have the Shakespeare thing at Preska, the same weekend. I'm not sure whether that falls on the same weekend this year or not. Basically, what we've done is, we've, we've chosen this weekend, as I was saying before, because there was another festival fell on that weekend, and the way people do the circuit, we chose that date so that they didn't have to change their whole schedule around and...
But let's put it on the table. What is your weekend for this year?
It's the third weekend of August.
Third of August.
It's always the third weekend.
August sixteenth to nineteenth. The only other thing that I would like to add is that this is a very family-oriented festival. It's non-alcoholic, and because it's acoustic music, uh, you don't get disturbances in the community around the facility. It's much quieter.
Little bit of lasters.
Any others have any comments here, Councilor Earl?
Uh, just a comment again. I wanna commend these two gentlemen. I know them personally. Kim's a former student and a good friend and a jammer and so forth, and also a member of the County Road Forty-Four Band. And Dave has his own, his own band, and, uh, they've been at this for five years. And they, they work, uh, very, very hard to prove this as a successful band. Uh, I, I'm just gonna add two cents. I think what, perhaps, my colleague, Councilor Barrett, there was a conflict, I think, one year with the Stampede when they were here, and, and the Campolos. The gentleman ran the, the music for the Stampede, started his own band, Campolos coincided, and ran the conflict, the stampede, and so forth. I think that's, I think that's what, um, why he asked.
We did have another conflict, not last year, the year before, with the cattle show, which, um, we started on Thursday evening, um, just for our own, um, we call it an open mic, so anybody that wants to get up and perform can get up. But we keep everything on a tight schedule, because Jerry can, you know, he can verify on that. Like, when we say the band's on at seven o'clock, it's seven o'clock. And, um, we get into the conflict with the cattle show that there was two hours prior to the first person on stage. The cattle were still running around in the, in the hall. So, uh, we worked with the, um, with the Fair Board on that, and we've, we've got that problem cured. We could see that that was gonna be a, that was gonna, you know, turn a lot of people off after, you know, going in, trying to listen to music and...
The older langurs.
Yeah. So, we, uh, that's one area that we did get, we did get fixed up.
Okay, Councilor Earl, and a couple of other questions?
Again, I, again, I just wanna extend my accolades to Kim and Dave. And I remember when that idea was initially conceived, and it was, we knew Sandhill was not gonna be viable. And, uh, it just kinda struck out as a small idea that just kept getting bigger and bigger. And then when everything, I'm talking to you folks, it just kinda escalated and just expanded to what we have today. But one thing that I've always been intrigued about was, I think, the sixty-five the first year, and then I think the third, yes, I think you said last year, you had more people, the, the number of, of RVs that came in, you had more people on Wednesday and Thursday or something. You did the entire, like, the two, the, the second year or something, right?
Some people come in early to camp.
I, I think it is. Not only here, just those days, but they come in early, like, I don't know, Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Which means they're spending money in the community.
And they're in the community as well, so that, that happens.
I think we were up somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty RVs this year.
Two-hundred-and-fifty RVs, or sixty-five start, so it's quite a, quite an expansive experience.
Okay, uh, any last questions before I thank the speakers? Okay, well, again, I'll thank you again.
Thank you very much.
We're very aware of your efforts and appreciate the fact that you work so hard to, uh, to spread the activity around the community. And, uh, as I say, when we get to that part in our budget deliberations, we'll all do the best we can.
Okay.
And, uh, the funds we have available. So, thank you very much.
I have some flyers. Can, uh, can we just leave these with you?
Yeah, just leave them with Rebecca. And also, don't forget to leave your application.
Yeah, it's here.
Thank you. And best wishes, by the way.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And, uh, certainly hope that, uh, we wanna thank you for, for the opening ceremony that you've done for us in the last couple of years, and Jerry for his emcee work. And, uh, certainly hope that we can have you back for this year to do the same thing.
And I'm gonna have a surprise for you this year.
Are ya?
Yes.
I always like surprises. No hints?
He's gonna sing a song.
Oh, gosh, you're not gonna sing, is he? Okay, so I'm moving on then here now, uh, to item six on the agenda. And we have three discussion items up for discussion tonight. The first is the AMO ask, and they're pushing us to get this before the local councils again, and I know it's already been discussed here once, which is the one percent, the proposed one percent increase in the HST, which AMO conceptualizes as, um, coming, if, 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 if the feds of the province can be persuaded to implement it, AMO, AMO conceptualizes that the money so raised by that one percent increase in the HST would come back to all four-hundred-and-forty-four municipalities in the province to be used for our infrastructure, uh, needs. Now, the motion that you have in front of you, or the draft motion that you have in front of you, I believe, Rebecca, that's the one that came directly from AMO, is it not? And it's not as well-worded as, and I didn't review it. I just assumed that they would put it the way they... Anyway, there's, there's some errors, but we'll deal with those. But I think first, is there a short presentation?
There is. It's about a nine-minute clip. It's by Matt Wilson. He's one of the...
It's nine minutes?
Yes. But it goes through the whole slideshow that is given to you.
Okay.
So, it highlights all the different processes.
Okay, well, it's nine minutes, but I think we'll play it, and, uh, then we'll have our discussion. Is there anybody that can answer questions?
Earlier this year, then, don't get me wrong.
I've had a lot of questions to it.
These dollars would help fund critical local services and infrastructure in communities across the province. This video will help you understand some of the basics. I'll talk about why it is necessary, what some of the alternatives are, and how it would work. Let's begin. Let's start with the process. Sometime what you see here, imagining a prosperous future for our communities, represents what we have endeavored to do through the What's Next Ontario and Local Shared Process. What's Next Ontario is a project that we began in the spring of 2015, and it represents one of the most ambitious engagements this association has undertaken in the last ten years. We thoroughly discussed financial issues with municipal leaders in dozens and dozens of meetings in all corners of the province. This process has included three specific phases. The first phase was to talk about some of the challenges municipalities face individually and the fiscal realities that we face together as a sector. The second phase explored what some of the solutions might be. And the third phase, which is where we are now, is to present the leading option to achieve sustainability, which has been unanimously endorsed by AMO's Board of Directors. In terms of what guided this discussion, above all else, we needed to be strategic and forward-thinking to modernize municipal finances. We needed to capture the diversity of municipalities across Ontario with flexible options that are accountable and transparent to the public. We had to consider options that represented good public and fiscal policy. We need to be fair and equitable to the taxpayer. And above all else, we needed to come up with solutions that are sustainable for the long term, both for municipalities and for the provincial government. What is the problem that we're trying to solve? To deliver existing services and close the infrastructure gap, every year for the next ten years, municipalities will need an extra four-point-nine billion dollars. That four-point-nine billion dollars is on top of inflationary increases to property taxes and user fees. It also assumes that all existing federal and provincial commitments are fulfilled over the next ten years, including cost-share programs and infrastructure. This is a substantial number when you look at it sector-wide. That means we had to consider a broad range of options to close the gap. In total, we looked at forty-four different options. This included areas where the province could help municipalities deliver services at a reduced cost. We've asked for these changes, but none have happened, and we've been trying for several years. We measured each of these options against a standard set of criteria, including how much revenue each could generate, the impact on specific geographic areas, and we boiled these down to one leading option. That leading option is a one percent municipal sales tax, which would help fund critical local services, like roads, bridges, and transit. It would help reduce the upward pressure on property tax bills and diversify how we fund local communities. Sales tax is used in other parts of the world to fund municipalities, including in twenty-five states south of the border. It is a well-respected and well-used tool. How does this idea line up against the other leading options? The first option is a property tax increase. Using the property tax to close the four-point-nine-billion-dollar gap would require an eight percent revenue increase per year for ten years. Of course, Ontarians already pay the highest property taxes in the country. We have to ask some pre-realistic questions about whether those increases are achievable or even desirable. It would mean that a person paying three thousand dollars a year in property taxes in 2015 would be paying almost sixty-seven hundred dollars by 2025. Another natural option is to ask the provincial government for further uplifts. In terms of what that option looks like, it is true that the provincial government balanced its books this year. However, we have to acknowledge that the provincial debt exceeds three-hundred-and-forty-one billion dollars this year. The provincial financial accountability officer, who is independent of government and reports to the legislature, has indicated that there will be steady deterioration in the budget deficit going forward. So, against this backdrop, municipal governments have to ask, what is the likelihood in getting more financial assistance from the province? So, this is a little bit of the history of how we've arrived at this bigger and bolder option. Let me walk you through some of the basics of what the local share could mean. It would increase the provincial portion of the sales tax by one percent province-wide. We pay thirteen percent now. This would increase the sales tax rate to fourteen percent. In the recent past, Ontarians have paid fifteen percent. After providing rebates for low-income Ontarians and administration costs, we believe this produces an estimated two-point-five billion dollars annually, or half of the gap that we identified. These dollars will be collected prematurely and redistributed to all municipalities based on an allocation formula. Talk about that formula in a moment. What are some of the key merits of this program? There are four. Number one, it diversifies municipal revenues. It closes the infrastructure gap and provides for local needs. Number two, in the... Number two, it means less municipal vulnerability to provincial and federal policy change. Three, it means more predictable long-term infrastructure planning and financing at the local level. And four, finally, it is a more progressive option. It reduces upward pressure on property tax rates. Of course, as you know, how much property tax an individual pays has no bearing on how much income they have. In terms of our allocation approach, our starting point is the distribution of two and a half billion dollars to four hundred and forty-four municipal governments. We used a sliding scale per household to do that. It treats every municipality the same way as they move through the scale. In a two-tier situation, the prior house one allocation is divided between the two. The share of upper-tier only source revenue is used as proxy or service response bonus. For example, if County X has forty-five percent of the revenues for all municipalities in that county, it would get forty-five percent of the revenue. Here is the sliding scale per household model. All of the allocations for every municipality are posted on the AMO's website. I'll link you to those allocations at the end of my presentation. We use the same model for all municipalities across the province. What are we asking? First off, we're asking to try on the idea, to see how it fits, to focus on the concept of what would mean to diversify revenues. Number two, how does the local share align with your local needs? That's a conversation that you need to have. And third, if you're not sure, please ask or read through some of the three reports that we have prepared. And finally, let us know what you think. We welcome the support of councils and the public. To conclude, all of the reports that I have referenced are available here at the length that you see on the screen. It also includes videos of recent conference presentations, which includes polling completed by Nick Nanos. AMO commissioned Nick Nanos at three different times over the course of the last year and a half to get a reading of how Ontarians feel about these issues. At each poll, Nick asked one thousand Ontarians, all corners of the province, what they thought of these proposals. In all three polls, a majority of Ontarians were in favor of raising the HST by one percent if they went to municipalities to fix infrastructure. As a matter of fact, the last poll conducted in June of this year, the percentage of Ontarians who supported the local share increased to seventy-three percent. Seventy-three percent of Ontarians are in favor of this option. Ontarians municipal governments are perceived as being the most responsive order of government. Ontarians have an intimate understanding of what those local needs are, in large part because they live that experience on a daily basis. These numbers are a strong voice of encouragement for municipal governments from the public. They have told us that they're willing to consider a big and bold option. I invite you to consider what the local share could mean for your community. Thank you.
Okay, so just a couple of comments. The idea's been arrived at, as Matthew has said, I've met him several times, and the last, by the way, was a session which he put on on January the eleventh in Brockville, invited all the municipal councillors and mayors from all this section of Eastern Ontario, and I think we had about forty people there. So, um, you can see the concept, um, and just to give you a bit of background, when the concept, uh, was pitched at the AMO conference last year, to the, to the various, um, leaders of the provincial parties, all three provincial party leaders turned down the concept. That was in August last year. Now, AMO's position is, their board of directors' position is, we've been turned down once, but we're not giving up. We need more support from the municipalities to make this thing happen. And I can't remember, maybe Rebecca can, what our position was on our first go-round when we first discussed this.
It was about a fifty-fifty split, if I remember correctly.
Okay. And I should've asked you to look it up, but I forgot to, so. So, anyway, um, we'll start the discussion, because they've asked us to put it on table, it doesn't have to be discussed here tonight. They've asked us to put it on the table, I undertook to Matt that I would put it on the table one more time, and so that's why it's here, it's gonna be on every municipal council table in the United Counties, including Prescott and Brockville, within the next six, four to six weeks. So I just need to know where your heads are. Go ahead.
So are they looking at a memorandum of understanding for this, the end of it? Or how, this, how do we know that the one percent will not get clawed back some other way?
And that is the big worry. A lot of us that are not in favor, that is our big worry. They, AMO anticipates that the money so raised would be distributed exactly the way the federal gas tax money is distributed, and, and let me indicate that the, the, Ontario is the only province where the federal gas tax that is due to the province of Ontario does not go through the provincial coffers. It goes directly from the federal government to the AMO head office, and is distributed from the AMO head office according to the formulas that are agreed upon. And the AMO head office reports back to the federal government as to how that money was spent. That's why we're so, uh, rigorous in following all of the criteria for the distribution of the federal gas tax. Cuts the province out of the picture, makes us totally responsible for that money. AMO anticipates that if they can get this one percent increase in the HST, it's collected by the feds, that it will come from the feds directly to AMO. And there's a, I'm not convinced that the province is gonna let that happen. And one of the things that worries me, and I'm being a little bit of a, I'm, I'm evading the issue right now, I, I'll, I'll say that upfront, one of the things that worries me is that this seventy-three percent acceptance that they're getting quite consistently from the polling numbers, every one of the party leaders is aware of that. The province is three hundred and forty-one billion dollars in debt. They're gonna want a piece of it, I'm worried. But anyway, what's your feeling, Counselor?
To Deputy Mayor's point, through Mr. Barrett, I, I, maybe I, no, I'm not being cynical. They, there would be a download of, of costs to the municipalities, dollar for dollar, and maybe plus one in the amount that, um, they recovered from, that they paid us. They're gonna download, if it's nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars is the example given by President Spurkardl, we're gonna have costs allocated to us in that same amount.
From the province?
From the province. And, um, I found it very interesting that they call it a progressive, a progressive tax, when, uh, when, uh, consumption taxes are generally viewed as regressive, because, um, if you're making, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and good for you, or five hundred thousand dollars a year, good for you, or if you make twenty-one thousand dollars a year, for you all to pay the same tax on a loaf of, on a, you know, a loaf of bread or whatever, that's, that's not progressive. They, they cater, they, they call it progressive, so it's a nice buzzword that they dropped in there so that I feel good about wanting to endorse taxing my neighbors one percent more, but, um, I don't think that the provincial government has a revenue problem. I think that they have, uh, that, that numeracy that the library CEO was talking about that needs to be taught in the schools. I think they need to, the principal, she might be leaving here to go to Queens Park to teach them, uh, maybe some numbers, and, uh, and then I think that they're probably fine with thirteen percent. And then they could only spend twelve percent and then take the one percent left over and keep it at thirteen percent and then give back to them. So, so all that to say, I'm not in favor.
Very. Can we just go around the table quick?
I'm not in favor, I haven't been, I'll just keep the rest of my comments to myself, but I'm not in favor.
Yeah, look, am I, I'm not, I'm not in favor. I'm, I'm not in favor, uh, I haven't been, I wasn't the first time, was presented, I have numerous reasons. I, I, I can see it at our own council table, it's a way to pass the buck, you know, here in love with government. Anyone of the three party leaders would've been insane to accept the, the proposal at the AMO conference or something in, in Ottawa. You know, who's gonna say, you know, and of course, well, let's, let's do it, let's raise the tax, you know? Who's gonna be holding the, you know, whichever one forms of government's gonna be holding the bag, and we just raise the sales tax, doesn't matter what's going to be amped to, to we municipalities, they're gonna be the ones that get the finger pointed at, and so it's just another way to pass the buck. The other thing is, uh, it, it's, I've said before, and I've seen it here around this council table, and I've been part of the discussions, and we like to keep taxes low, we got, people always rally, we got low taxes, low taxes. And this, this thing started, I said, in nineteen eighty-one, and we, I, there's a thing here in my Google News feed there, uh, January thirty-first, I guess it came in, and it was, uh, from, through The Guardian, it says, "One Big Pothole: Will Trump Fix America's Decaying Infrastructure?" Basically, there's, they're saying, from the Reagan years, in eighty-one, and it just started to decline, and some of the biggest tax cuts were during the Clinton years. And, uh, people just, we, we here, and look at our, our township. We, uh, the, the previous council, I remember the first year, we had, we kept things the same, no tax. Then it was, I, I thought it was two percent, but I see in Maloney's figures, it seems more accurate, one point six percent in twenty-twelve. Then it was left, then it was left, no tax rate increase. And then the first year of our, the new term, boom, boom, we've even lowered it down below one, one point five or one percent. And it's basically all these problems of infrastructure deficit, and you had, Todd was quoting the paper, I hate to use our friend Prescott as an example, but he was right. The previous council didn't do their job in keeping things up to date in the infrastructure, and now they've got a, they've got a whole bunch of things that they've gotta repair and so forth, but everybody's in the same boat. When it comes down to us, we'll sit here as a council, and we'll argue over two point five, one point eight eight, one point, and even.
Or zero.
We, we'd rather get to zero or go below. And, and we know that it hits, it's going to take a cost on our infrastructure eventually, because the guy in the coffee shop's gonna meet us and say, geez, you're raising our taxes again, you're doing this. And when we look at what Maloney's numbers show, you know, a difference of twenty, I'm thinking twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty-two difference in tax rates that, that we have to say, and, and we're afraid to, to do that. And one year, we said around this table, I remember talking about one percent tax rate increase, if you count twelve dollars a year, we mulled that over for, I don't know, maybe one or two, maybe three meetings, and so forth. So it, it's, it's, this infra, uh, infrastructure deficit is local government and, and provincial government, federal government problems, because nobody wanted to raise taxes, and it's all caught up, they said, what is it? They say that chickens have come home to roost. And they're coming home to roost, and there's a big deficit, and it's worldwide, and, and.
We had nothing but tax increases in the province over the past seventeen years. Tax increase after tax increase, where the hell's the money going?
The fact is, you know what I mean, a lot of the infrastructure.
That's why I have to keep my comments to myself.
But it was, I'll, I'll give you an example, here's the best quote I heard. Uh, somebody said about the Americans, they want something in tax rates, they want the same type of, uh, uh, system, but they want, uh, they want, uh, no, the British want some kind of a system of taxes. They'd like to have everything that France has, or Belgium has, or these countries that have, like, you know, more tax, higher rate, and Norway, Denmark, the ones that are the leading countries in the world, they charge high taxes. But Britain would like to have that too, but they wanna do the same thing with taxes like they are in the United States, lower it. And they can't afford to do it. So that, it, it's a, a central government, a federal government, it's a provincial or a state problem, and it's breaking down to our municipal problem, because we, we haven't got the option.
Is that a no, Jerry?
To do that, it's a no. I, I'm going to no, we, you know, like, we.
You know, when you look at the figures, it's a no.
So. Anybody else wanna weigh in here?
It's an O for me, too.
It's an O for you?
Yeah, like, one, I, it's an O for me. One percent, you know, is kind of a nice little small number. We have one point four, or whatever we have in our budget, coming up, that we'll find out later on. These are all small numbers, we say, oh, well, it's only thirty bucks or fifty bucks. I don't know what one percent on my total sales bill would be, sales tax bill would be over here. But you realize, does anybody in this room realize how difficult it is to get one percent increase on the rate of return of one of your investments?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the other side, I guess.
Okay?
Yeah.
Think about it, you go out for a GIC and you're getting, what, one, seven, five, two, maybe?
Yep.
Try to get three, nobody in the world's gonna give you three. So that's, that's where I home in on the one percent. To me, it's BS, and I don't trust any of those folks in Ottawa, or in Toronto, to do, you know, where did the money go? Uh, in general revenues, and use it for Air Orange or someplace.
Okay, so, I got, I'm getting consensus around the table here that there's no support for a one percent increase in the HST. I'm going to ask that, that this resolution, or this motion be brought to a vote. We can either deal with it here as a committee.
Your turn, Jerry.
I, I, you're gonna get another shot when we get to the budget, I, I don't wanna get on the wrong side of you right now.
No, 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 I just had a suggestion, maybe.
Okay, so, um, I, I wanna bring this to a close so that we can report back to AMO. And I think it's, uh, it, it's appropriate that we can report back as a committee. So, does anybody have any objections to putting this motion on the floor at the committee level and dealing with it here tonight? And nobody has any objections to do that?
Does that mean it won't come back?
Big one?
Does that mean it's not gonna come back?
If, if it gets defeated, it won't come back.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a mover and a seconder to put it on the floor here tonight. I'll say, so I have Counselor Smale moving, I have Deputy Mayor Taylor seconding. I'm gonna call the question on it, and the committee will report.
Record it, vote.
Yeah, okay.
Send the message on.
Yeah. All right, I'll call the vote, and then we'll just see how it goes. So, Counselor Earl?
No.
You're a nay.
I'm a nay.
Uh, and Counselor Barrett?
Nay.
You're recording these?
I am.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor?
Nay.
Nay, and Counselor Smale?
Nay.
And, uh, Mr. Robertson?
Nay.
And, uh, John, sorry, Bradley? Nay, and I'll vote nay. And so the, the record will show that it was unanimously turned down by the committee at the hall. And we'll report that back to AMO. Thanks very much, get that off the table. And now, uh, the next item on for discussion is six B, which is the Natural Gas Grant Program. Again, I'm, I'm asking for this to come forward as a, as a, for a decision. In some ways, I have very mixed attitude about this, because the province is already three hundred and forty-one million dollars in debt, billion dollars in debt.
They're all stupid.
I feel really bad about asking the Minister of Infrastructure to put another hundred million into the Natural Gas Grant Program, but we weren't successful in the first round, I hate to give up. And if they're gonna continue to throw money around, this is a good place to throw it.
Yep, I'll move it.
You'll move it? And do we have a seconder?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Barrett, or, excuse me, Mr. Bradley. Okay?
You don't have a name tonight.
And, uh, those in favor? Okay, so that's carried. Now, Rebecca, I'm gonna ask you to bring this forward as a motion of counsel, as recommended by this committee. Okay, and now I'm moving on to, uh, six C, which is just point of information, because I did discuss this with council of potentiality of Mayor Holman bringing forth the concept of a county-wide fire services. And, uh, at the time that we discussed it, there was a, a strong feeling, or at least a consensus on council, that it wasn't a direction in which we were comfortable heading. I was hoping that, uh, Mayor Holman would not bring it up at county, but he did. And, uh, I was the only one to vote against it. This, which was kind of awkward, because I did happen to be in the chair of that meeting, and I had to ask somebody to replace me in the chair so I could speak against it. But I just want everyone to be aware of the exact wording of the motion, because it does ask the CAO to prepare a report to provide options on a study. So there's three levels of qualification in there. And that's a report on options for a study. And, um, I did discuss this, the fact that this motion was carried by county council. Uh, I did discuss it with the chief and the, and the director of operations, who's acting as the CAO. And my understanding is that the CAO of the county, to begin this assignment, is going to meet, first of all, with the ten fire chiefs. I don't know when that meeting is gonna be held, but I just wanna bring you up to date on that. And I wanted to put it on the table in a very formal way. Okay, questions, Vinnie?
Did the discussion, um, move at all towards a reevaluation of advanced care paramedics?
Advanced, yes, well, uh, county council has already approved the motion to move to advanced care paramedics. And we hired either four or six advanced care paramedics last year, and this year, we're going to be adding another, I think it's three full teams, and they're all going to be, the new hires will all be the advanced care paramedics. So, but that doesn't tie in, tie in with this fire. So, but that doesn't tie in, tie in with this fire service.
They're not tying, okay.
No, doesn't tie in with this. The only, I might just well bring this up right now. There's been numerous discussions, this is the third round, at county council about the fire services volunteers carrying the naloxone. Naloxone kits to treat the opiate overdoses. Now, our fire chief reported to us at the meeting that he was at, that it has been discussed in our fire department. Our fire department doesn't wanna have anything to do with it. And that our fire department has full training in management of airwaves. And they feel quite comfortable that they can manage airwaves in a, in a victim until such time as the ambulance gets there and they have the kits. That's been our position. I reported that position at county council. But there is a strong push by some members of county council that it should be the same across all ten townships, and we should all be carrying these kits. And, uh, I just want you to be aware of that. So I'm hoping that our chief and our volunteers will stand, uh, their ground. Okay, I'm about to move on. Item number seven on the agenda, seven to eight is the fourth quarter building report. And I see that the building, uh, the building inspector is here. And, uh, very comprehensive report showing us the results for the full year. And, uh, I guess, um, Randy, what I'm gonna do here is, because it's, it's been circulated, I'll just ask if there's anybody on the, at the table that has any further questions with regard to the report. Anybody?
None here.
None? I think the important thing to note here is that, uh, the actual permit fee intake was actually ninety-five thousand dollars. And we didn't have to draw down our reserves to meet our expenditures in that account this year. Um, and I guess the other thing to note is we have sixteen new built homes out of three point eight million dollars. Um, I'm, I think I'll write next week's column on this report itself. But anybody have any other questions for Randy? Okay, I'll both move on, and I'll call for, uh, a motion to receive these reports. I'm gonna call at about, uh, item D. So there's the fourth quarter bylaw report is the next report, huh? I'm gonna let Randy speak directly to this, if you would.
Thank you, your worship.
Mr. Huff, sorry.
Okay, as you are aware, our bylaw officer is on contract with the township. And so he basically responds on complaint-driven calls. I would like to note on the covering page, it is noted that that is not always the case. He does, uh, open new files on his own accord as he sees things, uh, in, in passing by. So I especially wanna highlight the third paragraph down, and in the clean yards, which is always an ongoing issue. There's been some substantial, uh, work done there. Fifty of the cases that were brought forward this year, um, had some great results. The good news with it, that I really like, is we only had to go to court on, uh, three of those occasions. We've got compliance through notices and through, uh, orders that were issued, so that was good. And, uh, I'm sure we'd agree that there's more derelict vehicles than sixteen, but we are making a difference, so, uh, there is headway being made there, so I wanted to bring that highlight up, that, again, it's a focus to continue to move forward in those areas.
Questions?
I can.
Counselor Burrell?
I, I just have a comment. I think it's an excellent report, and the, the numbers are really a telltale for me that, uh, so much progress, and ones you alluded to. But when I look at the, you know, compare one year, year over year, the, the chart, uh, twenty, twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, and I look at those columns, you know, P E R joined up to inquiries about bylaws and noise and so forth. And I see in all, in, in, in those categories, that eight, in eight categories have been reduced. There are eight categories have been reduced. There's one, that, that they've stayed the same. And two, where they, where they've gone up, and basically, the ones where they've gone up are, uh, uh, illegal dumping. And, and I'm assuming that that's a good sign, and the fact that you probably gotta have an idea about who's doing the dumping, or have followed up on that, and perhaps caught the big, caught the culprit more so. And the other one is inquiries about bylaws, that one absolutely, but that's a good sign, and I, I look at that as, even though it's up, it's positive, and the people are trying to be educated on what, what the process is, and they're getting feedback from people that are more familiar with it. So I, I'm assuming that's, that's positive too. But when you see eight, eight of those categories all, uh, year, year to year compare, and, and they've been reduced, and ones remain the same, two up, and, and they're, they're in positive vein, so, um, it's an excellent report. This, when you look at, well, one ninety this year, three hundred and eighty-one last year. That's, that's phenomenal, that's, that's half, that's, uh.
And that's on part-time basis?
So, it's, it's a good, yeah.
And, and I guess one thing that I wanted to add to that is I'm still getting a lot of comments, uh, from the public and various, uh, you know, various places about, uh, the public is still receiving this program quite well. And they're still looking for, they're still looking for additional improvements. Um, waiting for somebody else to jump in here, but to the treasurer and this, and the, uh, bylaw enforcement officer. Um, I believe that our budget anticipates that we'll continue the same, uh, program next year as, as we did in seven, this, in twenty eighteen as we did in twenty seventeen. And will we still, will the same individual maintain the contact and, and, and execute the same way? Okay. Any other comments here? Hearing none? I'm about to move on then. And so now I'm at seven C, which is the fourth quarter treasury and reserve update. And, uh, give other people first opportunity for questions before I say it. Anybody in here first? While you're getting your notes together, I'll ask a couple of questions then. Um, if I may, uh, to the treasurer, uh, the accounts payable seem to have increased quite drastically. Is there a, can you indicate why that might be?
There's, uh, two reasons. Uh, we have a, a fair amount of public, uh, works holdback money in the, uh, for payables, as well in that, in accrued liability account, and.
Are they for capital projects?
For capital, for Giant Tiger, mainly.
Oh, yeah.
Giant Tiger from Newport Drive. And then a lot of accrued liabilities, uh, set up for year-end with respect to water and sewer from Rio St. Lawrence. So November and December's, uh, water and sewer is in there. There's a lot of accrued liabilities set up at year-end, uh, different from last year.
Okay.
But the biggest part was public works holdbacks.
Okay, now, the last thing, the, the accounts, the taxes receivable seem to be up quite substantially as well.
Yeah, and that is increased due to the, um, fire cleanup costs at Seven Thirty Truck Stop, has been moved, uh, into, onto the tax account for collection purposes. And that was done just prior to the year-end.
Oh, okay, so it shows as taxes receivable.
We had to do that in order for it to be a security lien against the property.
Oh, okay. Any other questions here? Anybody else? Go ahead.
Are we looking at the four pages before all?
Well, I'm just gonna concentrate on the first page first.
All right.
And then I'm gonna go on to the second page. So our reserve and reserve funds are, are up slightly from five million last year to six point six million this year. And the tangible capital assets. Does, do those tangible capital asset numbers include the port?
Uh, no, these are just the township's assets. Uh, and the number hasn't changed from September. I've not done any, uh, year-end, uh, adjustments in the general ledger at this point. I'm working at putting those adjustments in, so any of the additions, uh, for roadwork and construction hasn't been put through the general ledger yet.
Fair enough. Okay, so now then I'll go to the second page, and the second page is our schedule of long-term debt. Long-term debt, in my opinion, is very nicely, neatly managed and, and very well financed. And about one point three million of it, um, being paid by, uh, uh, third parties, namely, uh, greenfield ethanol, benefiting owners of various drains. And, uh, the arrangement that we have with the counties for the rental of the EMS, uh, ambulance station at Johnstown. So that represents one point three million of our long-term debt. And our portion of the long-term debt is about five point three million and, uh, four hundred and five thousand dollars of annual payments there. So does anybody have any questions with regard to these? You can see the way the long-term debt is coming down. Uh, down about a hundred thousand dollars since last year at this time. No questions, I'm moving on then to the third report. And the third report is the actual reserve and reserve funds, uh, report. Do we have any questions here? Counselor Burrell?
Yes, I'm just looking now, I think if I, my eyes aren't, if I inhabit with me, the numbers are smaller on my machine here, but down, this is raw water supply system. I'm just, I, I'm going across, which one is the transfer of, one, two, three down? Yeah, transfer of that, the six hundred and eighty-seven thousand. I, I just couldn't, I didn't understand for that. I just refreshed my memory. What's that?
Through the chair, the six hundred and eighty-seven thousand is coming out of the industrial park land reserve. And that's a combination of, uh, the water EA, uh, class EA, the, um, the, we pour, we borrowed five hundred thousand to do gravel to surface from that, from that reserve.
Okay.
And, uh, and our portion of Newport Drive.
Newport Drive, okay, great.
So, so now picking up on that, five hundred and five thousand dollars of that was money that we borrowed from ourselves, basically, for our roads program.
Correct.
Uh, so we owe that money back to that, back to that, uh, reserve account. So in actual fact, if we take the cash, uh, plus what we owe to ourselves, uh, the actual, I call it the true balance of that reserve account, would be the sum of the four forty-two and the five oh-five, once the five oh-five is paid back.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that actually would add another half million dollars, basically, to that reserve fund. Okay, and I believe that we've committed to pay that back at the rate of a hundred thousand a year, with the first payment being in twenty eighteen?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Burrell?
Just, uh, supplementary, please, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just, I'm wondering here, this is, now, Cardinal Hydro, let's look at that. It started off with seventy-one thousand, and then nineteen, I think, is going in, and then we're ending up with ninety-one, ninety-four thousand. Now that is like your, your collection. Last year, I recall, we used some of the hydro funds to help fund the repairs of the baby pool. And, and, uh, I guess I was thinking a lot of the funds should be going down, but I guess you're collecting in advance, you're doing your, your homework to not let the infrastructure deteriorate by collecting from people presently on the system to make a reserve fund for that when it needs to be repaired, or new meters, or whatever, transfers.
No, that, that, that fund, that fund i- is set up as a result of the fact that Cardinal, at one time, owned their electrical distribution system. And when they sold their electrical distribution system to Rio St. Lawrence, that, the, the money that they, that they realized on that went into that account to be spent in the village of Cardinal.
Yes.
Now, the hu, the nineteen thousand dollars that's coming in represents the, if I recall correctly, it's either the dividend or the interest on the loan that we, uh, granted back to Rio St. Lawrence. Is it the interest or the, or the dividend?
It's the dividend.
It's the dividend.
We also get interest as well, but the interest is dispersed between all of the funds.
Yeah, we own about twenty-some percent of Rio St. Lawrence, and Rio St. Lawrence pays a dividend each year. The dividend amount in twenty seventeen was nineteen thousand and seventy-seven dollars. The interest that it was, that the loan was a separate issue, it's two hundred and fifty grand, our loan to.
Two, two twenty, two twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
To Rio St. Lawrence.
So that we get interest back on that quarterly is just shy of two thousand each quarter, I believe, so it's about.
And that just goes into our consolidated fund?
It does go in our consolidated fund.
Yeah, okay.
So, so I just, for clarification, just to follow what you said, I, okay, I, I realize there was a Cardinal Hydro, and it was sold, and the mon, the funds were there to be used just solely for Cardinal. So they were just solely used for Cardinal with the meters, to, and, for meters, if I recall, right, at that time?
Yep, and, and the baby pool.
And, and the baby pool, okay. Now, when we, just for clarification, when we get that check at the annual general meeting from Rio St. Lawrence, whatever it is, it's, it's given to the township, but it goes into that account.
Yeah, that's the dividend check.
That's the dividend check. It goes into the Cardinal Hydro account.
You got it last year?
Yes, I brought it back.
That was the nineteen zero seventy-seven.
All right, so that's, okay, I didn't realize that it went just to the car, I thought it came to the gen, township general revenues, okay? That's, I had some clarified, it's taken eight years, I guess I'm a slow learner here, so I made, I better go to that numeracy event there that you're having there.
Okay. All right, so I'm, okay, any further questions here? If not, I'm about to move on now then to the, the last, uh, page of this report, uh, which is the, uh, report on our capital project status. And, uh, so now, we've got all of our projects that we, uh, undertook, capital projects that we undertook in twenty seventeen listed out for us. And, um, are there any questions here? Because I have one.
There's quite a few projects that are completed, or the RFP's been awarded. So we have probably a pretty good fix on the cost. And they're quite a bit lower than what the budget was. So that leads to a question that's, um, I guess, um, or maybe a statement, which says, how can we improve our estimating so that when we're doing our budgeting, we're getting figures which are tighter to, uh, the actual work that gets done? Now, I'm assuming there were no changes in the orders that, on these completed projects that reduced the scope of the work, which obviously would lead to a reduction in maybe price. There's a few overages, but they're not really significant in terms of amounts. Well, there's maybe one that has, but most of them are, um, slight overages. And might you, any thoughts on the table?
Um, I, I guess, uh, I guess I'm gonna respond to you this way. It's up to me to respond, but when I see the discrepancies between the budgeted amount and the actual expenditure on the county projects, the discrepancies are three times this width. But on the other hand, if you look at these, I mean, if you even, if you look at them all individually, I don't think that the discrepancies are that bad.
They're maybe around ten percent something.
Well, yes, but that's pretty tight, really. Uh, you know, I mean, because.
We have a ten percent contingency in our, in your, when you do a workup.
Yeah, in the budget, yeah.
And, and then you say, well, we wanna do this project next year. And we know that gravel costs, or whatever, whatever, and labor, and so on and so on. And we sum them all up into a total, do they, we not at a ten percent contingency?
Through the chair, typically there is a ten percent contingency.
So maybe that's what we're looking at here, is that we're not.
Narrowing it up to eight percent.
We're not burning up the contingency.
Um, I have a couple of other questions here, and I can see narrowing that contingency in tiny shape.
Yeah, I mean, I.
But you gotta remember that the estimates are based on, uh, prior to tender, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we don't get our actual dollar amounts until we see the tenders, so.
Yeah, I understand.
But a couple of questions here. Um, for example, the second or the third item from the top of the page is a new server purchased. It was not budgeted, and eighteen thousand was expended. Um, was that, was that an authorized expenditure? Because I can't just remember how that came about. It came about at the time that we changed our protector, did it? Right, and we authorized it by means of a, a separate motion.
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess the thing that I wanna ask, well, a couple, before I really get going here. If I go down to the Johnstown pool, it says, RFP awarded, project started. Actually, I thought that that was completed by now.
Yeah, it sort of, that is completed, that's just an oversight on my part in terms of the, uh, changing in the outcomes and status. the changing in the outcomes and status column.
Okay, so that's complete, and then, so there's the same thing not extend to the South Center well upgrade, that's completed as well? The, the well has been done, is it, has it not?
The well is done, but not, not fully connected at this point.
Oh, okay, right.
And, and has, the old well has not been decommissioned as yet.
Okay, now, water tower exterior painted, that's complete.
Correct.
And so the number 145 is accurate.
Correct.
And then the sewer main line Walter and Waddell, that's complete?
That is, that is complete.
Yeah.
And, and so that it was 55 budgeted and 42 actual expenditure, right?
Correct.
The RV, the UV unit, that's complete now, is it not?
That is, that is not, that is work in progress.
Okay.
The unit has been ordered.
Okay, and how about the Adelaide Street pumps, station, dry well?
That is also a work in progress.
Economic Development Strategy, did that not complete?
Yes, as I've said before through the, the chair, that there are some sections that I did not update the outcomes and status column on this.
I'm just trying to figure out which ones they are.
But the majority of them are done.
Yeah. So I guess the, the larger point that I wanna make is that I draw a line underneath Gallup Canal Road, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. So there are 16 capital projects above that. Those 16 capital projects were budgeted at 1.745 million. The actual expenditures on those projects was 1.621 million for an under expenditure relative to budget of 124,000 dollars. Now, so that's money that we, that appears in the budget column from last year, that we in fact did not expend. And yet we're basing our, our estimates for this year compared to last year's budget. So right now, we're budgeting 125,000 dollars more, we're estimating to spend 125,000 dollars more than we didn't spend last year. Why would we do that?
With, with respect to roads projects?
Well, I, I'm just saying that all along we're comparing 2018 budget ask to 2017 budget approved. I think we should be look, comparing our 2018 budget ask to our 2017 expenditure, and that gives us our increase. Because where did this 124,000 dollars go to? I mean, we budgeted for it, we taxed for it, we collected the money, we didn't expend it. So it's gotta go someplace, it's gotta remain actually in the operating account, that's where it rests. And it inflates the, it inflates the operational, the operating account by 124,000 dollars. We don't reconcile that operational account very much, but I don't think we really do. But that's where that money rests.
That's what I was getting at, that concept earlier, and the thing is, if you recall, we have, when we go through the process, I don't know if we'll get that page tonight, but we have those mandatories and those P, P1, P2s and so on. Like, and I realize that we probably can't go to tender on 18 projects until we have the budget approved. But for example, the canopy that we canceled out for the, for the town hall here
On the first round.
On the first program, was what, 20,000 dollars or something? Well, I mean, we could've easily diverted money out of these capital projects, you know, to add that in later on, if the scheduling would allow for it. But, I mean, I realize that you got that box you're in, you know, that you can't always respond that quickly, but, but that's the kind of point, our issue I'm getting at, I guess, is that we didn't spend this money, and so it's either gone into reserves or sitting in the operating account somewhere, and would be available, I presume, for the 18 side of the thing, which, you know, should be sort of carried over if you'd like in the 18.
One of the, one of the things that we've asked the county treasurer to provide is both the under expenditure in the operating account and the under expenditure in the capital account, over and above and aside from the work in progress that's carried forward. I don't have any problem with, with work in progress that gets carried forward, because I know that that money has already been collected. Part of the project is done, the rest of the project will be finished in 2018, so we're carrying some money, we're, we're carrying some money over in the, over the, over the year end as work in progress. But this 124,000 is not carried over as work in progress, that's just plain under expenditure. So why am I budgeting to collect that same money again? That's what I don't understand. Okay, are there any other questions here?
I'm just, I'm just thinking, maybe I have a left field here, is it, is it not we have leftover, and it's not in working project, do we not put like our surpluses into like our reserves to get them built back up? Was that not one of our concerns last year, why we had to, you know, borrow to do the roadworks so that we could build our reserves up and so forth? Was that not, I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud here, is that
Yeah, through the, through the chair, the, any surpluses that are realized through, through the entire budget, both capital and operational, monies due by the policy, reserve policy, go into capital reserves for future projects. We might not have spent it all in public works in the, in the capital aspect, but there are overages in operational monies in all departments that were, that were spent. Flooding, for instance, this year we had 25,000 dollars worth of flooding, flooding expenses that were not actually budgeted for in 2017, but we incurred those costs.
Yeah.
We had quite a few write-offs, you're aware of the write-off from Ingredion of 84,000 dollars, our write-offs were 35,000 as a budgeted value. So we're having to cover other things besides, you know, so we do have a small surplus at the end of the year, but a lot of these under, under here can easily be overages in other areas. Winter control this year will certainly be right up there with, with the costs associated with salt and sand for winter and all the expenses with respect to snow removal.
Yeah, but just from an operational capital point of view, do you, do you, at some point you'll know what your, what your under expenditure was on the operational side?
Over expenditure, actually, but
Okay, and then, okay, so there'd be an over expenditure on the operational side, when will we know what that number is?
Well, you have a variance package in your package
Okay, and then when will we know what the number is on the capital side?
In your package today, you'll see.
Okay, so you can point that out when we get to it. Okay, good. Any other questions there? Okay, so we'll move on then, so the variance report is next, and that's 17. So where did that 124 go?
So your best bet is to go right to page three, because you start looking at operational expenditures there. The first page and second page is all revenue.
Yep.
And you can see the variance column as the last column, not very last column, but second last column to the, to the right, and you can look down and see where I'm speaking of the variances in each of the operational budgets.
This is variance to budget, not variance to actual.
It's actual to budget. So it's 2017's actual to the 2017 budget.
Okay, so, so show me where the 124 shows up.
Well, it doesn't, it stares you right in the face, unfortunately it's in various lines. There's a lot of overages in several of the different departments in op, in operational costs. Administration was budgeted for 1.163, the actual was 1.282. There's an over
Uh, just a minute now till I catch up with you. Where are you again?
Uh, page three, second line.
Administration. Okay, but that's, that's operational, right?
Correct, and we were trying to express the fact that even though we might've been under budget in capital, there were overages in operational.
Okay, and we don't distinguish, we don't distinguish
You mix capital and operate together, budgets together.
Well, in a total budget, yes.
From a cash point of view, at the, at year end?
At year end, yeah.
Okay, I see where you're going here, it just doesn't come clear to me, it just doesn't come clear to me, because when you raise money for capital purposes, that's, that's a, it just doesn't seem to me that you should use your under expenditures from capital to subsidize your over expenditure in operations.
It just never happened in the corporate world.
No, no. And yet we don't separate it, that I can, if that's what you're telling me here on this sheet. One of the things that, that I wanted to point out on this sheet, just to the committee, 'cause it bothers me, is that you have to look at two sheets to see it, but on the revenue sheet, which is page one, under, under the heading of canteen, or beside the heading art canteen, the actual revenues for the canteen were 93,792 dollars and 84 cents. That was the actual revenue. And on page four, this is page four, yes, on page four is the actual expenditure on the canteens, which was 98,119 dollars and 95 cents, which means that the canteens, which basically purchased product and sold it, suffered a loss of 4,327 dollars. And I mean, I know we employ kids, and those kids get paid, and wages are a part of the expenditure. But when a canteen is incurring loss like that, it's, it's a function of either product control or wages, or pricing. And some, you can't, you can't buy a bottle of pop for a dollar and sell it at a dollar and a quarter, sometimes your markup affects your losses, and I don't know that, I mean, when I see numbers like that, we're not controlling something. I don't know whether it's the markup that we're not controlling, the loss that we're not controlling, or what it is, but that's a bad sign.
Well, wasn't that
Go ahead.
I saw some footnote or something that the, there's, the canteen didn't do as well or something, because it was not operating for a, a long time, was it in Cardinal or something, or the canteens because of the flooding issue?
And that affects revenues.
And that affects revenues, did I not read something in, in the pre-reading?
Yeah, but the revenues are what they are.
Yeah.
So they're down, they're down 8,000 dollars, the revenues are down 8,000 dollars, and that can be a function of the fact that it didn't open in time, but they are what they So are there any other, are there any other questions with this variance report?
Mr. Mayor, I The one that stands out to me every year is, oh boy, where is it, I think it's on page three, if you look, I've played this over in the past, and the last bottom two lines on page three, that's the waste disposal and transfer side, right?
Mm-hmm.
And your curbside waste and wayside waste. When you look at expenses, you see our expenses, let's say curbside waste, let's, let's round it off at 350,000 dollars. And if we go back to our revenues on page one, let's go back to the variance report, page one, and you see
250.
255,000 of revenues compared to 350,000 of expenses. So if you wanna look at the elephant in the room, user pay is not being carried out.
No, no, that's
That's, that's a big, big one.
Yeah, doesn't work.
Yeah? So
The difference is subsidized by the taxpayer.
You know, it's, it's, it just kinda hits, every area hits me, and then, you know, I mean, just, it's, it's a big one.
Sure is.
It's a big one.
And the 100,000 dollar difference there.
So anyway, that's just my observation, and
Well, that's a good one. Those are the kinds of things that, that we have, that we should be
Hate to bring up a sneaky subject.
Well, and, and I, I think what worries me is that when you look at that curbside waste and recycling, when you look at the revenue side of that, we know that this blue box program, which is a source of revenue on that line, is it not? Okay, and the blue box program is changing, and we don't know whether the revenue that we received in 2018 will be the same as the revenue received in 17, do we? Or has that been clarified yet?
We, we, through the chair, we are actually having received more grant in 2018 than in 2017.
Okay, so
We're getting some more grant money as a result of the recycling effort.
So it'll, it's gonna work in our favor, not against us?
It will work in our favor when we recycle more, yes.
Oh, when we recycle more?
Yeah.
So is it gonna be tied tighter to the quantity, the, the quantity of recycling?
Tonnage of recycling, yes.
Hmm?
It's tied to, to the tonnage of recycling, that's, that's happening.
Okay, and how's our tonnage measured?
I'll ask the operations manager to speak to that if he knows more.
Thank you. The contractor, they're, they're weighed in after each pickup.
Okay, so
And extract.
Okay, from the truck?
From the truck.
Okay, now, does it also accept, does it also, does the, the tonnage recycle, do, do we also get a, a tonnage from the Scott Road site?
We, we, we do not, because we're, we're in the residential curbside pickup program.
Okay, and it's that tonnage?
It is that tonnage, that the blue box program's on.
Oh, all right, so pays us, I wouldn't say it pays us, there's a 100,000 dollar difference there, but we are at least in the recycling business.
Great column article right there.
Okay.
We're bringing things, we're, we're closing the gap.
We are?
We are.
Okay. All righty, any other questions here with this report? If not, I'm gonna call then for a motion to receive those three, fourth quarter, those four fourth quarter reports. Counselor Barrett, second is by, Counselor Smale, those in favor, and that's Carrie. So those four reports have been received and reviewed. All right, now, 7E is the council committee statement of remuneration and expenses, obligatory filing before March the 31st, are there any questions with that report? Hearing none, and hope to go on. What happens to this report now, it gets to be made public, I understand?
We're not paid enough, but besides that
37 dollars and 80 cents of the air, come on.
Nobody's, nobody's gonna be sympathetic. What happens with this report?
This does get posted on the website.
Gets posted on the website, okay. Do you need a motion to receive it or review it? No?
Present.
Okay, it's presented.
Just present.
Okay, and now we get to 7F, which is the budget, and the 2018 budget, and the last
Reassurance recommendation.
May I pardon?
Reassurance recommendation.
I will move, is there a second?
I'll say.
You need a second? Not calling the question just yet. Anybody got any discussion on this budget? Before I kick in?
I think that we're kinda rushing to the accepting of recommendation on the budget, we really had that once or twice over, so I think that there's still lots of room for discussion.
Well, my concern is that at the last budget meeting, as the, as the briefing note indicates, we did ask the staff to come back with an increase of no more than 1.43%, and they've done that. My worry is that, I still don't know, I haven't got a clear picture in my mind of where that 124,000 went, and the other thing is, is that subsequent to that And the other thing is, is that subsequent to that instruction to, or direction to staff, we got a grant for forty-two thousand dollars from the Minister of, I don't know which one it was.
That's the money for the Main Street.
Yes, for the Main Street revitalization, now, I know we don't, we don't have all the details of how that program is going to, uh, work out, but nevertheless, it is revenue. And so, to the treasurer, is that revenue taken in any place here?
It is, it is in economic development, um, based on the fact that we don't know the criteria or the, or what the grant is used for, it has been put in as a revenue and then also included, uh, increased the township budget line by the same amount. Um, being that, uh, until we know what that money is used for, we, it's staff's interpretation of what we've read thus far, that it's, uh, for enhancements to our main streets, uh, and revitalization, so signage and street lighting, that type of thing, so it's fairly, from what we can see, is fairly prescribed, we don't know the prescription of what, you know, what the grant's allowing, so we don't know if any of the projects we have in our budget actually will fit the criteria of the grant. So, for safe, we're just putting it in and also maintaining the revenue to offset as an increase to those lines, not, not using it.
So you're showing a revenue and an expenditure equal amounts?
Correct, not using it as a tax rate decrease.
I have a problem with that.
So, we didn't really sharpen our pencil, we just took this grant money and put it in and used it to reduce it.
No, we actually found thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, which is what we were, yes, in addition to.
In addition to the grant.
We were at one point eight eight, and we've dropped down to one point four three.
So you found thirty-two in addition to the grant money?
Correct.
Okay, the grant money neutralized out, it's basically at half, yeah, it's a, it's just, uh.
Found money.
Our, our interpretation is that it's probably going to be similar to the C W W F, where projects would go forward and that would typically have been within the budget. So it's additions to.
That's, you're taking, you're picking up on that from the word enhanced.
Correct.
And you know, I mean, I was there, I heard them make the announcement, and I know that these announcements are always flowered up as best they can. There certainly wasn't any qualifications, uh, when the announcement was made. But, that doesn't mean anything, it's only when you get the cash in your hands and get the, uh, the criteria that you know what you're dealing with. So, where are we here, folks?
But the treasurer's hedged her bet, she put it on both revenue and expense.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, she didn't use it to, she didn't use it to go down further than one point four three. One thing I am concerned about is that fishing dock in Cardinal, because we did direct that, that that be put in at twenty and then offset with ten.
And it is in there.
It says discretionary spending.
Yeah, that's another option where, uh, if the council determines they want to reduce further, there is, those are the options of, which I did not include. So the, the cormant control and the fishing dock are discretionary that the council committee could look at and, and remove from, and that would be a, that would be a further ten, fourteen thousand dollars that could come off.
Well, the reason I'm concerned about that is because, uh, I think that that Main Street revitalization grant, if I can put it that way, I think we have to be very assiduous that we make sure that a portion of that goes into Spencerville, Johnstown, and Cardinal. I mean, I think we have to make sure that that, that's spread out across the township, so that's, and, and the, other than the little, um, enhancement at the corner, and I don't use the word park, the corner of Dundas and John, or Ridge.
Ridge.
Bridged, uh, other than that, I don't know what else we could do in, in the Village of Cardinal as a Main Street thing.
What about better, is there ever any demand there for some sort of sidewalk, or, I mean, it seems to me.
Through, through the chair, really with the downtime and revitalization, I would say that the only two areas that would technically qualify into, into this grant would be Spencerville and Cardinal.
Well, I think, again, going from the announcement, it was a rather broad stroke, but let's see the table.
I think we're putting the card before the horse right now, so I think that we have a recommendation on the table, so where are we in terms of that?
Well, I hate to call a recommendation and have it fail, that's the problem. Rather have it tabled, but until the picture becomes a little bit more clearer, but.
I, I, through you, Mr. Chair, like, we have in front of us exactly what we've asked them to do. We've malled over these numbers, I've gone over them, I've read, any questions that I had ahead of time, I've clarified. I, I, I don't know what else there is to throw back.
Well, I'm glad you've mentioned that, because maybe you can tell me where the hundred and twenty-four thousand went.
She just told you where the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars went.
Not clear to me yet. Not clear to me yet.
I'm sorry, it's through you, Mr. Mr. Chair, could we recap where the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is? Was there some overages, or we were short in some areas?
In a couple of operational plans.
Flooding, I think, and, um, shall I go on, or do you think that it was clear enough?
No, I don't have anything in front of me that shows me where that is. I'm dealing with dollars here, not, not ideas, I, I'd like to see the numbers.
I, I understand that, I understand that part of it, but, uh, yeah. Anyway, there's recommendations, there's recommendations, I, I understand, it's my tax dollars too.
Yeah. Councilor Deputy Mayor.
My understanding when we asked staff to bring the numbers forward was that we'd have another go at it and not just end with whatever came in, and I'm still not, um, comfortable with a ten percent increase in the library. I think that we can probably look at reducing that, it's not our business how the board handles the money that we give them, it's a, it's a donation from the township to the library, so I'd like to, to sort of, there's room there for, I think, for, for bringing the rates down, um, and probably in some other areas too, but, uh, I, and the question, that, another question I have is, um, and just for clarification, so I'm looking at the reserve and reserve funds for twenty seventeen transferring in, Public Works has eighty-eight thousand, four fifty for two seventeen transfer in, has that actually been transferred now, like, okay, so the, the initial amount that we had in the budget for twenty seventeen, that we taxed about was fifty, so that, no? This, okay.
No, we had that same amount, it's fifty plus then the, the LED repayment of thirty-eight.
I wonder where the thirty-eight is.
So the, yeah, the LED is, is budgeted.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Well, where do you stand around the table, do you want to vote on this, or are you prepared to accept it, being of your, your. Okay, I'm ready, ready. One of the things I should point out, by the way, just, I don't know whether it's Barry or Jermaine or not, but, um, so we've had, uh, one long county council session to deal with the joint services, the social welfare programs, and another long session to deal with the county operations budget. Session tomorrow that deals with the county capital budget. Now, when we had the discussion last Thursday on the county's operational budget, the county was, uh, working towards, the staff was working towards a two percent increase in the county tax rate. Now, there's no question that around the table, there's no, uh, there's no appetite for a two percent tax rate at the county in the operational budget. And I think what's gonna happen at the meeting tomorrow, that there will be a reduction from a two percent increase to a zero percent increase in the tax rate. The interesting thing is that without, with no increase in the tax rate, the county will take in an additional one point three million dollars just from phase in, assessment phase in, and assessment growth. So, most of the mayors around the table are prepared to, uh, as I read the table on Thursday last, are prepared to either, well, there's about three areas where there are substantial amounts of, of dollars that can, that can get us to a zero percent increase, and one of them, of course, is to take one, just one, of the capital projects off the table, and a couple of other small areas that are a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars each. So I don't think that the county will end up with a two percent tax increase, could be wrong, and we won't know that for probably another three, four weeks.
If I may, then, just before the recommendation that is on the table, uh, the paragraph, then that would lower that, and that it would be lower than the point six three percent total increase, then it almost would be down to zero if they go over from two percent to zero, it'd be in the negative sense for people, this is, if I take this treasurer's words, financial consideration, look at your paragraph, we have been advised that the school board rate is expected to decrease by five percent, the county's tax rate is likely to increase by two percent, if it's going to zero, then the net effect of the taxpayers at the two percent rate would be an increase of zero point six three percent to the total rate, so if it goes to zero, from, and we're, we're into the negative territory overall and with the, uh, school board, then, and the counties, and our one point four three.
Yeah, there's no question it would end up being a negative, I'm not too sure that it would be, um, what'd you say, one point six three?
One, uh, not, well, it's, it's, uh, the treasurer's saying if it's two percent, as they, they expected the counties to raise theirs by two percent, and the school board to decrease by five percent, that would, and with our one point four three, it would be an increase to the taxpayer, uh, of zero point six three percent, but if you're saying that the county's gonna go right to zero, which goes back to, you know, my, my, my point, that the, earlier, my, my diatribe, I guess, as my wife likes to call it, uh, that, uh, you know, let it, let it go, you know?
Okay, so you're.
But anyway, I'm sticking with the one, uh, we asked the staff, it was two point five, they asked, they, they came in with one point eight eight and weren't satisfied, and we asked them to lower it lower, and bring it in something, and they brought it in at one point four three, and the rate of, you know, usually my, my guide is, and I haven't followed it, because I follow the kind of lead here, we, we used some of the surpluses about three years ago to, to, uh, lower the tax rate, you know, we had a hundred and some thousand dollars, and then next year we found it, our reserves for that, and then we had to, boom, you know, we're looking at nine point seven six last year at one time, and then it finally got down to five point five four by borrowing from our industrial park account. Now we've got a situation where we're not even raising it by inflation, one point four nine, we're going to one point four three, we're still under. I think it's reasonable, I think staff's done a great job, and I'm, I'm, I'm willing to hope for it.
Okay, uh, ready, 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 okay, looks like everybody's ready, Councilor Barrett?
So, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate the work of staff in, in making the, the reductions by, um, taking another look at, at some of the numbers. My, my final comment at our last budget meeting was that I thought that one point four three percent with those efforts would be, uh, a great place to get to, and then there was one, I'm just trying to find my highlight here.
Vehicle, thirty thousand bucks.
Yeah, there's a thirty thousand dollar replacement of truck one, I think it was, and I, I, I'm channeling your, your computer skills right now, Councilor Earl, I can't find it, so it was a thirty thousand dollar, a thirty thousand dollar truck expense that, that I thought could be deferred, I mean, is it paying now or paying later, but, um, if, if I was looking for a place for a reduction, instead of going to library programming or recreation asks for a dock, there's thirty thousand dollars, and if the truck dies, we spend it halfway through the year, and we incur fifteen thousand dollars in expense, uh, versus thirty thousand over the whole year. Or we, or we look at something like, you know, leasing a truck, well, maybe you can't do that because it's, it's too much mileage, what have you, I don't think that we need to buy a truck, uh, now, and, and I doubt that we'd have to book that expense this year, so I think that's an easy thirty thousand dollars, um, of efficiency that we can find, and, um, and that doesn't see a reduction in service, uh, in the services that we provide.
Okay, so you're, in other words, you're looking for the number less than one point four three?
Right, and, and, and that's what I had signaled at, at our last.
I'm waiting for other people to weigh in here, Councilor Earl's had, had his, had a shot, I think he'll get another shot, but I'm just waiting for other people to weigh in.
Well, before I, before we put this into concrete, I'd like one more crack at, at tightening up, that's all.
That's all I'm saying, too.
And, um, if it means we have a special meeting or whatever, I'm, I'm available, doesn't matter to me how you do it, but I just would like one more quick go-through to make sure we've got this tightened as we can get.
Okay, and I, and I, and I guess that's the point that I was trying to raise about, where's my one twenty-four? Because so far, we've been comparing twenty eighteen budget to twenty seventeen budget, and I don't think that that's. Well, and that's what I like to look at, where are the actuals? Where did we overtax last year, because I don't want to overtax again this year. Go ahead, I'll give you one more shot.
Okay, here, here's my thought. We, I think we've got a long range capital forecast, and roads, uh, management system or, or forecast, if I'm not mistaken.
Roads program.
We've, we've got all these things laid out, and I think that when it comes time, and I know the vehicle, that may be the easy place to hit, but I think that vehicle number one, I think it's, has to be replaced, I think it was the one that a lot of expenses last year too, on this, one of these sheets, I noted that, uh, the, one of the things that, I noted one of the capitals items was that thirty thousand dollar vehicle, and if we don't replace them, then we're, here we go again, we're back on, you know, uh, some, some, you know, it's great to be a, a tax, a, a de-tax crusader, and I, and I often wonder in this, from eighty-one on, when these, this, this idea that taxes became the, the bad word is a, you know, an expression, and everybody's wanting to lower taxes. I wondered if we'd have a healthcare system today, if, if we had people voting on it, I know I'm, I'm pretty, I'm darn glad that I, uh, my taxes are, are paying for a healthcare system that's there when I need it, and I don't need my credit card to, first thing they ask for. And, and we've got plans for this, and that, that, I'm sure that, that truck comes up this year to be fixed. And he has, and he said, oh, put it off, put it off, put it off, so we put it off another year, put it off. Here's the elephant in the room. I heard a group of people, the Citizen Against the Dump, uh, they didn't, they didn't care what it cost, they don't care what it costs for garbage, just as long as it's not in our township, they, they don't care anything, get it away, don't have any dumps here, well, we've got a hundred thousand dollar deficit in garbage. Let's raise garbage bags, let's raise garbage bags so much and, and get the money from that, if we're gonna, uh, kick over one point four three on twenty-six dollars versus thirty-two or something like that. Let's raise garbage bags, and up to the full cost, user pay, and we won't have to worry about, then we'll take that hundred thousand dollars out, and we've got three times the cost of the truck. You can't have it both ways, you know what I mean, it's, it's, you know, like I.
But I'm beginning to wish now I had called the question really quick without debate.
Mr. Chair, uh, through you, I'd just like to ask the deputy clerk to just note that I am now officially a tax crusader, I think this discards to.
Detax, 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 not a tax, so, detax.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's, let's think about it this way, folks. We can, we do have a recommendation, staff did do what we asked us to do, I understand what they did with the forty-two thousand. What do we gain, what do we gain by going another round? Is, it, it, do we, about one point four three percent increase, I had my numbers with me last time, but it's actually a greater, five point some percent, actually, that amounts to, uh, increase to the actual taxpayer in their pocket, because it's the, uh, phase in plus the assessment creep that, that they're gonna be paying for in addition to this one point four three, I think it comes out around five, uh, or just a little over four.
Wish I had brought the start numbers. If you look at the, again, of the examples of the, uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor, examples that the treasurer has laid out for us, sample properties with increases in the assessment, rates of people on, uh, not on water, and, uh, they, the work that they've, they've gone through, single family detached, not on water, and they're showing the median residential assessment, And they're showing the median residential assessment sixteen was one ninety one, and it's gone down to one eighty seven, carried on forward for one eighty seven, one eighty seven. So the actual assessment has decreased in that instance.
Yes, but pick one where the assessment has increased.
Semi-detached, let's go semi-detached, it's one hundred and thirty, it's gone up to one thirty one, that's not a drastic increase. And then you've got your, uh, detached on water, or, uh, you have a single family detached on water where it's, where it's, uh, three hundred and fifty three five, and it's now gone down to three forty.
You would pick one one up.
Well, I, I'm using example, all right, let's, let's take the example, there's one, uh, sample residential not on the water. And I think it's, uh, I'm looking at them all here, uh, one eighty eight, it's now one ninety, one ninety, and then after, uh, that's the one ninety seven sixteen. No, that's two oh four, two oh four. So she's, you, you take examples and they've, they've given the three, and that's the one where it's gone up, and that's, that's not on water. And, and you look at the three, at the numbers there, down in the last three, well, not the last column, but the, the ones where she compares the, the rates of the taxpayer per year. At two point five, it's going to be on the person where the rates have gone up, forty eight dollars. And, uh, phase in assessment increased forty eight, and then for the one point, uh, eight eight, it's forty eight fifty four. And then the, the option two, one point four, forty eight thirty two. And then the tax rate increase, you see it in there, that's, those are the numbers I was referring to. You're talking thirty two, twenty four, and eighteen. And they've got us down to where it's eighteen dollars. I mean, that, to me, it's, we're, 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 we're fighting over six dollars here.
Well, it's not that simple, but anyway, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta figure out the process to get out of this.
Okay, okay.
Move on from here. You, you want in, Councilor Barrett?
Yeah, so, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm all for, uh, going another round. But if we're going another, like, let's give her, like, let's just do, we're, we're here. So what, what do we need to, what are we gonna look at at a next meeting that we can't look at today? We're all in the room, all the numbers are in the room, let's, let's do it. Like, just having another meeting for the sake of having a meeting to say that we had another meeting, I, I don't think that that's a good use of all of our time, we've all-
Okay, well, so the, the reason I would say, I, I left my package sitting on my desk. Which my package, I, I concentrate on the total, uh, increase to the taxpayer, which is, what does the, the tax? And I, and I discount the people that had decreases in their assessment. And I look at the people that have had increases in their assessment. So those people get an increase due to phase in. And they get an increase, that increase, if I recall correctly, is five point something or four point something, I don't have the number in front of me. Plus, the one point four three brings them up totally to a little over five percent. I don't have those numbers in front of me. So that's what I would look at in another round. So, and I would ask, in another round, I would ask for an accounting of where we were over expenditure on the operating side. Here's the budget, this is what we were over expenditure on the operating side. Here's the capital budget, here's what we were under expenditure in the capital budget. And I would compare the twenty eighteen ask with the twenty seventeen actuals. Because I don't want to raise money that I, that I didn't use. Can always raise money and put it into reserves, it's not lost, it doesn't go, it doesn't get, doesn't get siphoned off someplace, it goes into reserves, I understand that. And reserves are always, the bigger your reserves, the better it is, but you have to be careful what you're taking out of the doll, out of the taxpayer's dollar, out of, out of the taxpayer's pocket each time. So, here's what I'm gonna ask, once around the table, yes or no? And I'm gonna go with, the question is, another session or not? Go ahead.
Uh, to, uh, um, to maybe focus that next session, Mr. Mayor. Um, perhaps everyone that has, like, any questions or any items they'd like highlighted, we could come with those or even submit them in advance to the chair and, and your asks of the treasurer, and then we can have that all distilled in front of us so that everyone knows what everyone else is looking for when we sit down.
My ask is on the table. My ask, A S K?
Yes, sir.
Yours is too?
Yeah.
So another round, yes or no? I'm gonna start there.
Yes. I'm not really in favor of another round, I think the girls have gone through with a fine tooth comb, but, so I'm gonna say it.
Councilor Smale's in all, right?
Yeah, good guess.
Deputy Mayor Taylor?
Uh, another round, I think we can change.
I'm gonna go with another round.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see if Councilor Morrell and I, uh, can find a place to meet in a truck.
I knew it, hopefully. Did you smell, is that, anyway, uh, I, I, no, I, I think-
Okay, I got-
So-
Go ahead.
So, just, I, I, we don't really wanna kill the motion, uh, because that might be the outcome that we're looking for. So I'll move to table, um, to our next committee meeting, that would be the, the correct process, uh, Mr. Chair?
Well, I think, I think if we're gonna have another round, we really should try to have it before our February council meeting and try to get this wound up. I just, I sense while it's fresh in our minds, I know that the CIO would love to see the budget passed before she gets back. That is, I think she's maybe even set that up as a, as a-
It's a good budget, it's, it's, this one's, I have no qualms with this one.
Okay, I got, I got three people who wanna go another round. One, two, three, and I got one, two, three, four.
However, if we're holding a supernumerary meeting, then I, I might slide to the other column. Just 'cause that's, that's a lot of time, and, and I really don't think that we're gonna close a lot of ground there.
You wanna, you wanna slide to the other column now?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, now it's, it's, uh, four and three.
That's it, meeting's over.
Get back.
Gary, do not tease people like that, it's just a sick kind of humor.
Okay, so, you're sliding. Okay, no, okay, all right, so now I have the motion on the floor, moved by Smale, seconded by Morrell, uh, that the committee recommends that council approves the draft twenty eighteen budget with a one point four three tax rate increase for the municipal portion. Now, we've had a long discussion, we've had lots of differing opinions. But let me say that after all of that, let's be united on this vote to pass this budget. Some of us are gonna have to swallow and eat a little probe, but let's be together, Mr. Mayor. So I'm gonna call a vote.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I tell us?
No, no, I can't, no, I can't.
Mr. Mayor, I have smelled for years, and I've held my nose for years, and I've, I've gone against my better principles where I've always thought that-
You're on the right side here, you don't have to swallow this side.
I know, but we should, we should raise it at least the rate of inflation. And I am giving up point zero seven percent here tonight by not raising it up to inflation one point four nine. I am really sacrificing, but I'm willing to vote for it.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call a question. Those in favor, please signify. One, two, come on.
I can't.
Three, four, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the majority here. I'm gonna go with the majority. All right, it's carried. You got a budget, you got a budget. She's like pulling nails. All right, okay.
More like, more like teeth.
And then, okay, so I'm on to item number seven G, which is investment in industrial park land sales. Again, we have a recommendation as to how to distribute the money from the sale of two point some acres. Need a mover for the recommendation? Okay, I'm taking Deputy Mayor Taylor and seconded by Counselor Smale. And are there any questions with this recommendation? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify. Motion is carried. And so now, moving on to transfer to and from the reserves and the reserves funds. Lots to talk about that tonight, and the treasurer's asking for authorization to do it. There's a recommendation in front of us, need a mover and a secondary. Counselor Smale and Mr. Bradley. And those in favor of the recommendation, please signify, and that's carried. And the credit card policy amendment, uh, oh, man, this is a tough one. To add the librarian to our credit card policy. And we do have a recommendation here, so I'm gonna ask the recommendation be put on the floor.
I'll, I'll have it.
Okay, Counselor Barrett and seconded by Counselor Morrell. And who wants to speak to it? I know I do, you do?
I'm opposed to this because the CEO librarian is not a township employee, and you should not be putting employees of other organizations on township credit cards.
But that's my problem.
If I may, through the, uh, through the chair, the treasurer has a little bit of information with respect to the account.
Right.
Say again?
Sorry. Uh, what, what, uh, Mr. Grant's saying is that, uh, you, you're correct in saying she's not an, uh, employee of the township in essence. She's employee of the library board, but since the library has put their, uh, banking in with our banking agreement, it, it becomes under our umbrella. So for them to get a, a credit card, they would have to get it through our, our policy, being that they're part of our banking agreement.
Do we co-mingle the funds?
No, they have a separate, same as the Port of Johnstown. The Port of Johnstown, his, the credit card for the general manager is under our banking agreement.
Okay, but that's not a separate corporation, though. But worry, what, my question is this, how does it function functionally? So the CIO of the library holds a township credit card, and the bill is two grand at the end of the month. And we pay that bill?
No, the library board would pay that bill.
So-
Because they have a Royal, they have a Royal Bank car, uh, account, and the, any, uh, purchases on the card would be paid out of that account.
Okay, so does the treasurer understand that?
Yep, and they, they quite often go up to book fairs and what have you, and they do spend quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
And we're, we're expecting them to pay it out of their pocket. And I know I've paid very large-
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, I'm just trying to figure out how it works functionally, but, so what you're telling me is that although it's a township card, the payments are made from the library board account.
Right.
Okay, so that kind of deals with that. Go ahead.
Well, it's-
But you're right.
It's, I still, it's, uh, I don't understand why the library board cannot just get its own credit card.
We tried.
Because they're under our banking agreement. So everything has to be governed under our banking agreement.
How did it get under our banking agreement?
Well, back, back in September, the bar, board came to the, to the council and asked for, uh, to switch from TD to RBC under our banking agreement, and that was agreed upon.
You, but I don't understand that, holy god.
One of the reasons it was done, there were a lot of nickel and dime service charges being charged to the library. And, um, so we investigated, and they said, they said that, uh, we were able to join the, the group, but still remain separate.
So you have a separate account with it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so the fact that you have a separate account in the name of your board, and your board is incorporated under the library's act, so it's a completely separate entity. You have a completely separate bank account, a completely separate check book, uh, a completely separate deposit book. You're a separate entity, but you can't get your own credit card?
Yeah.
Holy god, I find that really strange.
When did we try it? Back, back, actually in September or October, I believe.
Yeah, it's because the account is held under our banking agreement.
Yeah, okay, I can-
And as a result of that, then the township governs, gets cards under that agreement.
Go ahead.
Uh, I mean, uh, like, the liability to the municipality is so small, and it's under the direct, um, the direct, uh, supervision and follow-up of the municipal treasurer and, and the CIO. Uh, to, it's, it, unfortunately, their, their organization isn't able to, they're not, they're not deemed creditworthy. And if, if the difference is that we bought a prepaid credit card and prefer, you know, and had to do it in a, you know, it's just, it's just so small. If they were looking for a ten thousand dollar, uh, overdraft, uh, or something like, yeah, right? So that, that would make me uncomfortable, but it's two, it's two thousand bucks. If there's a problem, we send them a bill for two thousand dollars, the board pays it to us, and we cut up the credit card.
I'm sure that Melanie will be debiting our account directly.
Okay, so, I, I just, it's a, it's a weird setup, but fair enough, I understand it now. Is there any further discussion here, a good call question, those in favor? Okay, it's carried. And so that's the credit card, twenty eighteen cost of living increase, oh, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Taylor's favorite. We've got a recommendation in front of me here.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, have it moved by Barrett, seconded by Counselor Smale. So you know, we already did the one at county council, go ahead.
So, on this, it's, the, I'll say my piece, and through you, Mr. Mayor, then the deputy American savers, and, uh-
Can we just rewind to last year?
We could, I'll be, I'll be shorter, I'll be shorter than I was before. It, I think that it's important to remain competitive with, uh, comparable organizations in the municipalities. And, uh, adjusting employees based on their performance, on, on, uh, on their meritorious performance, um, does not improve or maintain the municipality's competitiveness with our competitors. So, so North Grenville, Prescott, Augusta, SD and G, uh, whomever, um, we've gotta keep, we've gotta keep in step with them. It truly is the name of the game, and this is the way that we can do that without artificially just, you know, doing, doing, uh, paying for studies and consultations every year, because this is basically the, the, the public sector practice. So, uh, it's, it's not my favorite thing, but if it prevents all of our staff moving in Exodus every time there's a job posting in a different municipality, then I'm, I'm happy to move and, uh, support the recommendation for a cost of living increase of one point four nine percent retroactive to January.
And it, and it should be clear, it goes, it, what it does is it keeps our grid comparable or competitive with the grid from another municipal, from other municipalities.
Right.
It adjusts our grid. You wanna speak against it?
I say the same thing every year, so, repeating it again, this recorded vote.
Okay, I'm gonna, well, we'll, it'll come, it'll come to the council as a recommendation from this committee, and the recorded vote will be at the council meeting.
Fair.
So, uh, those in favor? All right, it's carried, so it'll come forward as a recommendation at this end, without repeating itself three times. Um, K, municipal, seven K, municipal insurance, a recommendation to extend the insurance broker of record appointment. And I think it's, Counselor Smale is moving, and Counselor Morrell is seconded. You can see his hand there. Uh, discussion of any? Hearing none, those in favor? It's carried. Recommendation again, and then L, the commercial banking proposal. We have the proposal in front of us, along last, thanks to the diligence of our treasurer chasing down the Royal Bank. Uh, looking for a mover and a secondary for the recommendation. Count, or, Mr. Robertson is moving, and seconded by Counselor Smale. Mr. Bradley, you're short getting your hands up tonight.
He's slinging over there.
I seconded a couple.
Okay, the council had notched a bylaw to authorize the mayor and treasurer to execute the banking services agreement for a three-year period with, or a three-year period with the Royal Bank Canada. And the treasurer gives us the gist of it there. Questions, any? Discussion, any?
What, what is the cost to upload check files?
That's the fee that, uh, so we're, we're switching now that the bank is going, uh, is going to be moving, uh, the branch in Spencervale. We have no ability to do onsite deposits. So the, the, uh, RBC has provided us with a check scanner device, uh, that they'll pay for. Uh, but what we have to pay on a monthly fee is the file upload fees, which in this case, uh, were thirty five dollars a month.
How much?
Thirty five dollars a month. Um, since this, uh, action item, I actually have had, uh, further conversation with our RBC, uh, commercial marketing manager, and he's dropped that to twenty five dollars a month. So another hundred and twenty dollars savings, uh, annually.
No matter how many checks.
Yeah, it's basically a monthly standard fee that allows you, actually, the scanner, uh, scans two hundred and sixty checks at a time, I believe.
Two hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
So then- So then, uh, what do we do, we scan them in?
We scan them in, and automatically, we upload that to RBC through our, our online express. And it gets deposited straight away. We're going to have to determine, um, some procedures in, in terms of, uh, the, how we keep those checks and, and for the retention for the checks and such. Uh, which I'm in discussions with the bank as to the procedures they suggest we do. And, uh, potentially even, um, how we're going to deal with the cash aspect of, of our deposits. Because we still maintain a fairly high, uh, amount of cash, um, floating through the office as well, so. Um, it, the ATM at the bank will take, uh, paper currency, but it won't take coinage. We do have, certainly our, our, uh, facilities manager deposits weekly from the canteen, which there's quite a bit of coinage, uh, through the vending machines in the canteen. So we may just get him to do our cash deposits when he's doing his other, because he does them down at Prescott where, uh, where we, our branch money will be placed.
Yeah, well, I mean, somebody's gonna have to be going into the branch at Prescott, period.
But we don't wanna be doing that week, daily like we're doing currently, so.
So, so just explain to me one thing, so, you've got 200 checks came into the office at tax time.
Yeah.
Over a two-day period, you scan them in, what happens to those paper checks?
We, I'm still determining what, what the procedure will be in terms of the retention of those checks. Um, and I'll, and I'll get that, that data from, uh, from RBC having further conversation after we get it.
What worries the heck out of me is when, when a machine is scanning 200 checks. All it has to do is make a blip, and my check got missed, now what is my, what is my comeback?
Yeah, now we'll be keeping the checks, and we'll have to determine how we, uh, you know, what the procedure is. We'll be having to make up different, uh, types of receipt batches, one just for checks alone. So that we can verify the amount scanned through is, is what we're depositing, that type of thing. So I'm just in the process of creating those procedures.
There was just an article in last night's news about some girl that had, university students had had lost, gone to a bank, and they, it was a Royal Bank. And they'd lost a 300 or 400 dollar check. And it was a real, she never did get it back, I don't think, but it was a real slugfest, and, and they'd said, you know, it's like fighting City Hall.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're getting in an argument with the bank is a tough thing.
Yeah.
Under that scanning regime that you're going to. Does the money go right into the account, our account, immediately, or do we have to wait for it to clear?
Um, it will go into our account, and again, I'm not 100% sure of the delay in terms of, of clearing. Uh, currently, when we deposit, it usually takes at least three days after a physical deposit for us to determine if there's a bounce-back check.
Yeah.
Uh, it may speed that up, it, uh, from all the documentation that I've received from the bank, it, it suggests that it does.
The banks, one of the reasons the banks are going to scan is they wanna close their clearing centers. Ultimately, I guess, yeah. I, I had a case over a week ago in the family, where I wrote a check to a family member, scanned on the phone. And it still hasn't cleared my account.
Still hasn't cleared your account.
Did your family member get it?
Uh, yeah.
Well, that's good news, then.
Counselor, I think we're clear here. If we're, uh, I know that this isn't the, the commercial banking services agreement isn't the place for it. But to the, uh, deposit procedure, there should be the, um, the policy around, you know, one trip to the bank a week versus five. Um, there should probably be some, a, a review of, of that, and, uh, you know, best practice. You know, two people going, uh, signing it out at the office, you know, the bag number against a sheet. Um, and then not as much for the employee's protection as it is for the protection of the, the corporation's funds. So, um, because that one person on the way to the bank and they get, they get robbed, well, it's, it's one person's word versus two people. Um, the other thing is one person is of course less of a target than there are two people. And, uh, when the money goes into the bank, uh, you have some, you have a, you know, an independent witness, uh, somewhat, who's watched the bag go in. And I've had the experience, um, with our business that, uh, the money's gone into the bank, and they don't put, um, cameras on their night deposit boxes anywhere. You'd think that that would be the only place that they, they need a camera, there's no cameras on the night deposit box, you didn't put the money in. Turns out that the armored truck got robbed, and they couldn't account for all the bags, and they just said, we didn't get that bag. But we, but we were able to prove, we were able to prove that we put that money in that. And because we had a second person, then they did a little extra work, oh, wait, yes, you did deposit the money, and it was insured.
You're kidding.
Two people, yeah, the, the truck got robbed, because all of the deposits in Ottawa go on a, on a transport truck. Uh, guard a transport truck to Montreal, and they all get sorted there.
Oh, that's where the clearing house is.
Yeah.
So they, they go straight from the night deposit box onto the truck?
Yeah, there's some like small branches that, that count in, in-house, but, uh.
Seize the bag the next day inside.
Yeah, very, very rare.
Oh, my goodness. Is it armored truck?
Yeah. Not armored enough. So, anyway, I, I don't know where, where you'd fit that in, but that's a best practice that I would say.
And I am reviewing that whole procedure in terms of how we deposit and, and, and wanna go forward, what, what that looks like.
Okay, great discussion about scanning checks, man, man. Okay, I'm about to call the question on the recommendation, those in favor? Motion is carried. Our recommendation is carried. And so now, I'm at council inquiries, notices, a motion, anybody have anything, Counselor Barrett?
So, um, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, I see that the office is closed next Monday, am I right? Family Day, we're closed, but council chambers will be open.
What?
Right, do we have a meeting next Monday, or have we moved it to Tuesday? Okay, so my calendar shows it that we were meeting next Monday, and that's a tough conversation for me to have with, uh, with my boss, Mrs. Barrett, so. So I'm glad, I'm just gonna drag that over onto Tuesday, and, uh, inquiry resolved, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any else, any others?
Okay, Counselor Morrell, if I may, uh, looking ahead, which I seldom do, uh, I just wonder if, if it would be possible, no, I, maybe I should bring it up at the, I think this affects more the, uh, Public Works Environmental Services Committee. But I'm wondering, in, in April, there's a meeting slated for the 16th of, of April, that's a Monday night. I'm assuming that is the, uh, environmental, Public Works Environmental Services, and I think first, it's the 1st of April, and then it's the 9th, and then it's the 17th, there's this.
Second, 9th, and 16th, you're right.
Second, 9th, and 16th.
No, second is Easter Monday, so it won't be that big.
Well, we, do we have, I thought that we, you don't have Easter Monday holidays, do you?
Not currently.
No. So there, we, we have a meeting that, that Monday.
About every year, we say that.
For once in my life, I have, so anyway, uh, April the 2nd, uh, it's Easter Monday, I know, but they, I guess you have Good Friday, but not Easter Monday. So, we'll be having a meeting that night and the 2nd, and then I, that's CDC, and then the 9th is the, uh, this, this committee. And then the 16th would be the Public Works Environmental Services. Is there any way that we could get that changed, uh, to the 17th, the Tuesday? That's kind of like too much notice to, to Tuesday, the 17th, that'd be a problem.
My calendar is free.
That's not a problem, sir.
True.
Okay, so, I guess, can we make that change then? There's a problem, you, problem, and then, no?
Not currently.
Okay, so.
I don't think there's gonna be a meeting on Easter Monday, though, that's my committee here. Correct?
Okay, so, so, first things first, it looks like the 16th is, the Public Works meeting is changed to the 17th. And you're saying that there's no CDC on the Easter Monday?
I'm not coming.
You're not coming?
I'm gonna be cooking a turkey and spending time with my, my kids.
Are you moving it to the Tuesday?
Oh, now you're getting tight before, yes, I guess we should, eh? Yeah. I guess, there is some stuff on the agenda, so yeah, Tuesday will be, but I'd rather not come here Easter Monday.
Okay, so then there's two changes for April, okay?
It'd be way too much fun, because it's too close to April Fool's Day and all that kind of stuff.
All right, okay, so two changes there, now, any other notices or motion or comments? I'll just pass on a comment. Uh, a resident of Glen Smale Road, I, I already reported this to the Director of Operations. Resident of Glen Smale Road gives grateful compliments to the road crew on the way the, the road is being kept up and maintained and plowed this year, so just pass that on. And, uh, so that gets me already into the mayor's report number nine, a couple of things. Uh, the Augusta Mayor's breakfast march the 2nd, uh, at 7:30 in the morning, new location this year. And I can't, it's called the Thousand Islands Mall, I think, or the Thousand Islands something. It's the old Gren, Grenville Christian College. And, uh, item number two, just a notice, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 105 Ladies Auxiliary will celebrate their 40th anniversary on Saturday, on, uh, the 17th. And, uh, at 5 o'clock, so there's 40 years from 1978 to 2018, is the Ladies Auxiliary. And that's my announcements, and now we're at item 10 on the agenda, which is the question here. Are there any questions from the press?
Question on the, uh, the school board, 5% projected tax decrease, is there, is that attributed to anything?
Uh, let's make it very clear, it's not the school board.
Okay.
The province sets the educational tax rate each year.
Okay.
And the province reduced the educational tax rate this year by 5%.
So that's province-wide?
Province-wide, yeah.
Thank you.
We've just become a collection agency for them. And we, if I recall correctly, we become a collection agency for the province to collect the education tax. And we remit the taxes so collected directly to the school boards.
Yes, correct, all four schools.
On a quarterly basis, I think. And we remit, I believe, to five boards or four?
Four.
Four boards. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, okay, we do have a closed session, I need a motion to end a closed session as, uh, allowed under the act for, uh, for, for three different reasons, actually. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for municipal or local board purposes. Approved the closed meeting session of November the 1st, uh, 13th, and the Prescott wastewater treatment plant arbitration.
I'll move that.
Moved by Counselor Barrett and seconded by?
Mr. Bradley.
Mr. Bradley. And those in favor, please signify, motion is carried. So we'll have a little five-minute break, and come back and deal with these three items in the closed session.
Okay, I have the motion to.
25.
9:35.
The plan's doing really well.
9:36.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And, uh, so reporting out a closed session, it's moved by, uh, Counselor Barrett, seconded by Deputy Mayor Taylor, that the minutes of the closed session. Held on Monday, November the 13th, be accepted as circulated, those in favor? That's Kerry. And, uh, reporting further out of the closed session, staff was directed to, uh, uh, proceed with the, uh, Prescott wastewater treatment plant arbitration issue. Uh, and, uh, proceed, uh, uh, under the advice provided by legal counsel. And, uh, the third item in closed session was the pending or potential disposition of land. And, uh, council was briefed on the potentiality thereof. And now looking for a motion to adjourn.
It's almost like we're in by.
Bradley and seconded by Morrell, those in favor?
Oh, oh, Kerry was doing it, that's.
Oh, yeah. Okay, no, so it's Kerry, I didn't know you had it.